I will call meeting eighteen ten to order is six thirty P M. We have a forum, all our regular members are present and we have no longer before we start, I would like to call on Ruth, she's been with us but not in the role of town planner and she was recently appointed town planner, so congratulations and we look forward to working. And under added agenda item, I got a draft letter from selectmen that he would like us to consider tonight. It's something the selectmen will be taking up and it's follow up to the September second conversation we were invited to with the selectmen. So I'd like to add that under correspondence if that's acceptable for the commission. Would somebody make a motion to add that under correspondence?
I make a motion we add the first selectman's letter to our agenda under the correspondence section.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, the motion is made and seconded, all those in favor say aye. At you now. Any other added agenda items? Legal notice, we have a legal notice that I believe ran in the Journal Enquirer September first and seven. It is letting the public know that our commission is holding a public hearing tonight at six thirty P M. On two applications, P Z twenty twenty one dash twenty five, a special use permit, the applicant is recycled concrete products of Connecticut. It's to reestablish a volume reduction facility at thirty three Apothecary's Hall Road. The owner is Herb Holden Trucking. The second item in the legal notice is P Z twenty twenty one dash twenty. It's a zone change application. The applicant is S J K Properties LLC requesting a zone change from R three to M F D D. Or property, property formerly known as Corey Meadows subdivision adjacent to Depot Street and the town of Ellington, Connecticut. Which subdivision and associated real properties compromise approximately forty eight point seven eight acres. Forty eight building lots, six parcels, road areas designated as Corey Road, Sullivan Farm Road and Boulder Fort and other portions of property associated with subdivision improvements as depicted on plans entitled Corey Meadows off Depot Street. Assessors map twenty seven block seventy seven lot six and nine subdivision plan as approved and recorded on the land records of the county's winter and such lots, parcels, road areas and other portions of property associated are known as a whole series of blocks and lots on map one hundred and a series of flats. And on map one ten and on map oh ninety, all block seventy seven. So that's our legal notice for tonight's meeting. The next order of business on the agenda is public participation. And here, the question is, is there any public participation or somebody who wants to speak to something that is not listed on the agenda tonight? Anyone in the room?
Speaking on behalf of Blue Rhino Propane, wanted to discuss thirty three Apothecary's Road and
That's, that's on the agenda.
That is on the agenda, thank you very much.
Is there somebody else? Yes ma'am. We can't really hear you, so if you could, I'm not hard to speak with the mask, I'm having a think though.
I live on East Road and I'm quite concerned about the bridge that goes over Broadbrook, just integrating on the eastern side. I've sent a couple emails to the town, I've not gotten any answers. I asked to be mailed, US mailed, or replied, I haven't gotten any answers. But I'm quite concerned about it, we're watching the guardrails slip down to like a forty five degree angle. They put on heavy, really heavy trap rock there a couple years ago and it seems to be holding fairly well, but the road is still slipping down, we've had a lot of construction in the areas, we've had a lot of heavy trucks come through there, the construction over in cornfield farther down East Road. But anyway, I would like to see the town address that, either you know, have some type of money to put aside for it for future repair or take a look at it now and see if there's a study or something that needs to be done about either reverting the river or repair it to the road because it's going to be needed very shortly. In my opinion, I'm no structural engineer or you know, highway department engineer, but I think it needs to be looked at.
Joe, can you help us with that? Where would we refer that to?
Oh, well, speaking, Public Works is already, is on the list. And it's, the town engineer is fully aware of the situation and they're working on it as best they can, but the road isn't going to fall in. Nothing's going to happen other than the river keeps coming up and washing across the road. It's pretty well stable right now with all the river. But the town engineer is fully aware of the situation. And if you want to correspond with him, I would reach directly out to him at the town, which is Len Norman. Okay, well, I cannot speak for him.
Just for the record, could we get your name? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Burma Shaw. Burma, like the country Burma Shaw.
Okay, sorry, it's just
I know.
But it's definitely a situation that we are aware of at the P W.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who wants to raise something?
My name is Robin Chesky, I live at one oh two Reservoir Avenue. And I am speaking, making public comment on the proposed farm housing that was presented as conceptual plan at the last meeting. I know that the farm, the farm owner will have to submit a special use permit. But I'm speaking on behalf of myself and our neighborhood who are really concerned about this. The proposed farm housing is for forty workers and this would be put in a residential area.
At this point, we don't have an application and it's really not fair for the record to have a conversation on something that is pending before us.
So I wasn't able to speak last time because it was an agenda item. I couldn't speak then. So to now, now I would like to actually speak on this.
Okay, there will be a, if an application comes before us, there will be an opportunity for everybody to speak.
Okay, duly noted, but we have many concerns and I would like to address the commission at a later date, but
Okay. Great, we definitely want to hear.
Okay.
Anybody else in the room? Anybody who's joined us by Zoom who's not in the room who wants to raise something of, or consideration. It looks like there's a couple hands up. How about Lori Suzick, I mean the first ma'am?
I just wanted to express, my next door neighbor, the Aerosmiths had concerns about the the gravel pit bringing materials in, they had strong, strong evidence that they were bringing materials in. And I guess my, my comment would be that Mr. Kemmett seems to have preferential treatment in town regarding his projects, even when all the residents who are affected by his projects oppose the projects. And I just wanted to comment on that.
Okay, can you tell me, tell us what gravel pit you are referring to?
The one on Wapping Road, the W S G, the one that was in the former wagon shed nursery property.
Okay. Can you tell the staff person, look into that and
That's it.
An allegation that, I guess there is, what's permitted is excavation and moving material out. There's an allegation that there's material coming in?
That's correct, that's correct, and again, that project was opposed by every resident at the meeting, by the first selectman at the time, by every, every person there that was opposed to the project except, except Adam West Haver and Merrick Kemmett. And I'm just wanted to comment to planning and zoning and again, with the change in the zoning, all the residents affected by the change were opposed, but Mr. Kemmett seems to have some kind of preferential treatment in town. But the residents, over the residents who live here and whose lives are affected by the decisions and the businesses that he runs, I mean, the gravel pit has forever changed the peace and quiet of our neighborhood. And I'm going to keep bringing it up because I have to live with it every day and the people who made the decision don't have to live with it. That's it.
We are doing our best to consider each application on the facts before us at the time. There's another speaker. Uh, Mr. Brian?
Yes, hi, Quentin Bragg, seventeen Eastwood Drive, Broadbrook. Um, I have a question, does the town have a conceptual plan for the Hemlock Court three yet?
I'm not aware at this point, I couldn't answer that off the top of my head.
What was that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I'm not aware of any conceptual plan, I'm not sure what you're referring to for Hemlock three.
Well, I'm referring to Mr. Kemmett received five hundred thousand dollars from Ria Corporation, they own Hemlock Court three. They gave him four hundred thousand dollars for city water rights, they gave him a hundred thousand dollars for excavation. And they also said they would pay for half of his sewer line leaving his property, S J K, the Corey Meadows. That's going to go down to Perry Lane. And obviously they have a big stake in this property, there's fifty three acres that they own, that he's trying to get the M F D D. They're adjacent to this property, I do understand you put a little clause in there stating that you could not have a piece of property next to it. I don't think that that will ever hold up in court with Ria Corporation, but I guess we'll have to see on that one. So we do not have a conceptual plan at all for Ria Corporation, Hemlock Court three?
I don't know if there's anything that's been received prior, we haven't gotten anything on that in the last year. But it seems to me like this comment is more related to one of the applications that we're considering as part of a public hearing. So it may be better to
I'm asking about Hemlock Court. I'm not asking about S J K, he came into it because he got five hundred thousand dollars from them, but I'm just asking if we have a conceptual plan for them yet.
Town staff are telling you they're not aware of anything, but if you do find something, would you please let this gentleman know what you found?
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else, somebody by the name of David? Pass their hand up.
Hi, I just want to make a comment.
Could you please identify yourself?
Yes, my name, my name is Sonya Guzzi. I just want to say something that Lori Suzick said, her information is incorrect and the Kemmets don't own any property on Wapping Road. I think that should be aware because it seems like, you know, I don't know where she got our information, but that's incorrect.
Thank you, is there anyone else who is joining us by Zoom who would like an opportunity to speak on something that is not on the agenda? This is Brad, Mr. Brad.
Hi, Elizabeth Bragg, seventeen Eastwood Drive in Broadbrook, I have a question about Joe Sauerhofer. I was a little confused when the meeting started with open space and Joe said that he was, he didn't want any more open space in town and that it was a lot of work for his guys, so I'm assuming that Joe works for the town of East Windsor, am I correct?
Right, yeah, that's correct.
So because of what he said on the last meeting, I don't, I don't think he could be biased in his decision making as opposed to his job and the town of East Windsor and the community.
He was speaking as a commission member, he was not speaking as John. He was speaking as a commission member.
But he was.
Regarding, excuse me, regarding some questions that were asked. He's not speaking as a member of his department of Public Works. He was speaking as a commission member to questions that were asked to the commission.
But he, I'm sorry.
In a conflict of interest.
He did say that would be more work for my guys.
But you took that out of context, there are certain areas that of the, I can't speak for the commission, but on my behalf, there are certain areas we don't want because they're useless to the town and it only creates a problem for the Department of Public Works, that's what he was saying. If you read, if you read the whole thing correctly.
I can speak for myself if you'd like me to answer you. My theory on open space was is, is there are situations where we take three quarters of an acre of property that is behind someone's house and we have no access or we take property that will continually need maintenance because the developer doesn't want to maintain it and that's what I meant by open space. And it will continue to cause Public Works more man hours to maintain those properties, that's what I mean. I, I've lived in the town my whole life and I, I am not biased against anything, but if you would like, if the board would like and the commission would like, I will abstain from anything.
I don't feel there's a need, I, I feel like in the conversations we had, you were giving us good input on the perspective of what it costs the town on some of the decisions that could be made and so it was a heads up of something to think about.
Just want my mind on it.
Is there anybody else who hasn't had a chance to speak? Joining us by Zoom? I'm not seeing any more hands up. Okay, so good that, yes.
Christina Doll, one oh two Reservoir Avenue, I understand that, you know, you're not allowing us to speak on the Mr. Grassix's proposal, the farm housing that he proposed at the last meeting because we couldn't comment. I, I do want to note that on his conceptional plan, there was no well. And so because there's no well on the plan and nobody pointed it out, his proposed project is close to the wetlands. And so I think it's important that that is noted and it's figured out where the well is. And also to know that we're not on public water, so this project is going to have to support forty men.
At this point, there's no project, like your point twelve paper and town staffs will vote for that when?
I do understand, and I do also want to make the comment that when Mr. Kemmett came forward with his conceptual plan for the development on Depot, that, you know, it was stated by our selectmen that he wanted people to, you know, he wanted Mr. Kemmett to go into the neighborhood to have conversations. And we haven't had any conversations with Mr. Grassix. And he also wanted people to know, he wanted to see if there was opposition. So we're here to say that, yes, there is opposition, so we heard both sides that from our selectmen that he wants to know if there's opposition. And then he also wants to know that the developers are speaking to the people in the neighborhood. So we just want to note that both those facts.
Okay, thank you, but we're going to take up farm housing if and when an application comes in.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Okay, let's move on to approval of minutes. We have draft minutes before us. I would ask if anyone on the commission has any edits they would like to see or changes. There are none, a motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
I make a motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes of meeting eighteen oh nine on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one as presented.
Okay, do we have a second to Mike's motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Joe. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye.
Okay, and let the record show that Jim is abstaining, the minutes are over. And the record, everybody needs to know that we have received an application, we will not be discussing it tonight, this is just letting everybody know that the, our application was received. It's number P Z twenty twenty one dash twenty six for a property at Orwell's Road. And they will be seeking a special use permit to construct a medical office. It's a zone B three, it's on map twelve, lot twenty four, lot twenty four. So that's for everybody's information, not for discussion tonight. Under performance bond, do we have any actions, permit extensions or road extensions? Okay, nothing there. We have no continued public hearing, so then we will now take up new public hearing. The first of which is P Z twenty twenty one dash twenty five for thirty three Apothecary's Hall Road, recycled concrete products of Connecticut. It's a special use permit for a volume reduction facility to reestablish the conditions. It was previously permitted, but the permit has expired. I will let you introduce yourself and present your application.
Good evening, my name is Tim Kuhn, I'm a professional engineer with J R Russo and Associates here tonight representing recycled concrete products of Connecticut, also known as R C P C as well as Herb Holden, who's the person who runs R C P C. I don't know if it's easier for you to pull up the plan on the screen mic or for me to put that board on, it might be easier to see if it's on the screen.
I don't know.
So as you mentioned, we are here with an application for a special use permit to reestablish conditions that were allowed under the expired permit, which was issued in twenty eighteen and expired in twenty nineteen with the passing of Herb Senior. It just, it slipped through the cracks, the renewal did, and then with the onset of COVID, it just delayed even further, but we're here tonight to to re, have us re-permitted with a special use permit for R C P C. The subject site is located at thirty three Apothecary's Hall Road, which I'm sure you all know. And looking at the exhibit, Apothecary's Hall Road is on the left-hand side of the page, which is the south and north is to the right side of the page. The site is approximately twenty nine acres, it's zone M one industrial, it's abutted to the southwest and north by industrial properties. Industrial zone properties, I should say, to the west across the railroad tracks. I'm sorry, to the west is the residential properties. To the east across the railroad tracks is industrial, which is currently occupied by crop. What is her crop?
Nitrogen.
Okay. Industrial to the south across Apothecary's Hall Road, industrial, which is currently this is part of the sports club. And to the north is, is again, more industrial, here's land. But to the west, we have residential, these are property, which essentially the closest to us is a agricultural field, it's current news and what it's the site's accessed via a single curb cut off of Apothecary's Hall Road down in the southeast corner. As you enter, there's an approximate hundred and seventy foot paved apron trapping of the site. You come in, you enter, there's a scale house and a scale where trucks are weighed and then they can either drop off material and pick up material whether they're bringing it in or purchasing it. The remainder of the southern portion of the site is essentially occupied by material stockpiles, there's a small storage building. And it's also the processing equipment, which is mobile processing equipment for the materials. The northern portion of the property is currently maintained as an agricultural field. And in the center of the site, there's a stormwater infiltration basin to handle a stormwater from the site. Along Apothecary's Hall Road and the abutting properties to the west, there are large vegetated burners to provide screening. R C P C has owned and operated a recycling facility at this location for approximately thirty years. They accept clean fill including broken concrete, brick, rock, stone, reclaimed asphalt pavement and soil. And then what they do is they process it by crushing, screening and mixing to generate a recycled aggregate material which they sell. They do not handle solid waste. They only handle clean materials. This site was originally permitted in nineteen ninety one as a recycling facility. Subsequently in two thousand and nine, it was re-permitted with a special use permit under the newly established volume reduction facility section of the zoning regulations. In twenty thirteen, there was a modification to include an excavation permit on the central and northern portion of the site to essentially fill it and flatten off that for the expansion of the R C P C facility operations, however, that filling and expansion never happened. So that, that excavation permit is, is gone and that work did not, did not happen. The special use permit, as I mentioned before, has been renewed on an annual basis up until twenty nineteen when it lapsed after the passing of Herb Holden. And we're now back to reestablish this special permit in accordance with the existing or I should say, the twenty eighteen permit, those, reestablished those conditions, the one change that we are requesting is to modify condition number eleven. Condition number eleven currently requires the annual renewal of the special use permit in accordance with section eight fourteen four G. Now, section eight fourteen four G is a section from the first excavation portion of the regulations. What we are requesting is that that be removed and replaced with the requirement from the volume reduction facilities section of the regulation, eight oh seven point one oh which calls for the annual renewal of a zoning permit, which is issued by staff. And this would be a change so that the permit renewal would go through staff rather than through the commission. But it is consistent with the volume production facility regulations. We did receive the memo from Mike Model the other day where he requests some additional information. And I'd like to go over those now. However, I'd like to preface that discussion by pointing out that However, I'd like to preface that discussion by pointing out that volume reduction facilities typically deal with solid waste. And it's obvious that the regulations that you guys have are geared toward those types of facilities. RCPC is unique in that it deals strictly with cleaning materials. It accepts and processes clean fill, does not accept solid waste or other contaminated materials. Thus, the application of the regulations, sometimes there's some barriers. In particular, I want to point out Mike's comments, number one and four, where he refers to sections eight oh seven, one A, and one F, respectively, which require that materials that come to the site be stored and processed indoors. I'm sure you're all familiar with the RCPC site and operation and essentially everything is stored outdoors and is processed outdoors. Were they processing solid waste? I believe these sections of the regulations would apply. However, as I mentioned, they only process clean materials. Thus. All their materials actually fall under section eight oh seven one C of the volume reduction facility regulation. And this section states that materials such as clean wood materials, asphalt, concrete, stone, and other similar materials accepted at the facility shall be processed and stored in a manner approved by the commission. Yeah, I believe this section of the regulation is what provided the commission the flexibility to approve the original special use permit in two thousand and nine with the operation being outdoors. Because what the operation is, it's of these clean materials which can be processed and stored at the commission's. His comment number two was previously addressed by the discussion of the materials that are accepted and processed by RCPC. Again, clean fill materials. Comment four notes that the regulations require that this facility is in compliance with DEP permit requirements. Because RCPC accepts and processes only clean fill and not solid waste, it is not required to permit it as a DDP solid waste facility. Thus, in that regard, RCPC is in compliance with the DEP's requirement.
No general permit for volume reduction?
No, not for not for anything that has not for clean, what is classified as a clean fill. Did you put down the, I sent you the definition there?
Of clean fill?
Well, the DEP's, the DEP's definition of the clean fill. There is no, there is no license with the DEP for for doing that. There is absolutely for anything that would be contaminated, polluted, anything that would have any kind of like PCB or letter like that. Those types of materials absolutely have to be brought to a controlled facility. They're very careful about their words as far as like what the word waste means, what the word facility means. So RCPC doesn't really qualify for, doesn't qualify for that based on the definition of the DEP has for what is statistically clean fills. Which goes back to the brick, like brick, small, concrete, and stone and sand.
And for the record, that was Herb Bolton.
Thank you.
The comment number five brings up the requirement regarding solid waste residue from the operation. Because we are dealing with clean fills, there is no solid waste residue.
So you never get contaminated loads coming in?
No, we it's no, they we get rebid, which, you know, we we take, we process out, we take out. So that's about as far as it goes. And if anything is ever brought in that's questionable, we 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 check the load, we load it back on a truck, send it out. We have no way of handling something that's that that would have any that kind of like particular to it because it would cost us a lot more to bring it to land, essentially.
And finally, Mike's comment number six. Brings up that the submission of a traffic study is one of the requirements. And I've gone through all our files on this project, and I'm not aware that a formal traffic study has ever been completed. However, it is apparent that the number of trucks and traffic generated at this site has been a topic of discussion for years, going back to all these permitting, all the permitting that has been done. And as a result, in the permit that was issued, that has been issued, actually right from nineteen ninety one, the permit has always had a restriction on the number of trucks. And currently, in the in the, I shouldn't say, in the two thousand and eighteen approval, that limit is maxed out at ninety trucks per day. So. Although there may not have been a formal traffic study, I believe that in the past, information has certainly been passed along and discussed regarding the truck traffic generation and the traffic generation at this site. And we would request that, you know, based on the fact that we have a limit on the truck traffics now, that we would request that that the information provided and accepted in the past be accepted now in lieu of a traffic report. A formal traffic report. At this point in time, would you be happy to answer any other questions or?
I guess my other question before I turn it to my fellow commissioners is, um. I see trucks coming in that are full. And I see trucks leaving that are empty. I wonder if it, some clearly material comes in. I'm wondering what the outflow versus the inflow is like. Okay, the reason I ask is in the trucks per day, but also in the amount of material on site, I believe. When you drive by and look through the fence that rolled in, you see a big pile. How high is that pile going to get? What time does it start to shrink?
To add to that, condition number twenty is thirty feet. Yeah.
There there is a entire thirty feet.
And I, that's what I was recalling, and I was recalling, asking the questions. How do we know that the pile is, I'll say, in compliance with what was approved for the size of the pile? And I believe on other gravel pit type operations, we require annual, I'll call them as built, I don't quite know what you would call it, to document and sign by a PE certifying that the pile is in compliance.
All right, I'll start by addressing the height of the pile. There is a condition of approval that that states that the pile shall be no higher than thirty feet. And and it says, in particular, not be visible from Apothecary's Hall Road. Which obviously that condition probably cannot be met through the driveway. But anywhere else along Apothecary's Hall Road, you cannot see that pot. Right, the burn and the vegetation spring adequately. We did do the survey from the top of the pile. And unfortunately, in that condition of approval, it doesn't state where that height should be measured. Because if you measure it up along, parallel with Apothecary's Hall Road, it actually meets the thirty feet requirement. But the site drops down as you go into the back. And from there, it's much higher than thirty feet. So we would contend that the intent of that requirement or that condition was visibility from Apothecary's Hall Road. And if we meet the height requirement from Apothecary's Hall Road, then I believe we meet the intent of that condition.
So I would have assumed the height was from the base where you started building your pile.
Well, the base is.
Again, if the condition isn't clear, it's not clear.
It says thirty thirty feet from the existing grade, so it's pretty clear.
But the existing grade is slopes down too much.
Okay, so the pile should drop. So it's to me like the pile's not dropping, it's continuing to the same point and then going up.
Well, if if this is the opportunity, I think, and we would like some two clarification on how how to measure the height of the pile, where to measure the height of the pile. Again, if the site drops to the back, I I would still say that, you know, is it really necessary to have the back of the pile drop because it's not going to be visible anymore?
To answer.
The pile would just go up into the sky forever, you know? Well, no material comes out.
No, so to answer your question before, so this since January, I ran these numbers today. Since January, we've sold twenty three thousand tons of our recycled product. And then we've accepted seven thousand tons and.
So the pile, sure.
The pile, yes, the pile absolutely should. And and that is unfortunate, that is a bit of the nature of our business, is that, you know, it's it's a, you know, we a project happens, a building comes down, a hospital comes down, a school comes down, that's what our, that's what our facility basically does. Is is the service. It it is a service for, you know, these big projects, so they don't go into landfills that they can recycle. So what happens is there will be inevitably, there'll be a school that comes down, a building that comes down, and it creates thirty thousand, forty thousand tons of that type of material. That material comes in, we process it, we process it at the rate of about fifteen hundred tons a day. When we're when we're running. We don't run twelve months out of the year, we run during during conducive weather. And then we have to find, and then on the flip side, we have to find projects that we can, excuse me, we have to find projects that we can, you know, that would take that take recycled material. So right now, you know, we have several projects that are taking the recycled material, and we don't have as much stuff coming in for that reason. So, I mean, we're not trying to grow the pile to the sky, we're not, and if you were there, if you were there earlier in January, our finished material pile had basically been depleted. So this year, we were actually kind of forced to start crushing and processing in the month of February, just because we had customers that were looking for the product. But we are, we are aware of the thirty foot, we have had a lot of questions. Tim and I have had many discussions regarding that. And we 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 had many discussions regarding the the thirty foot and where that thirty foot's from. We we took it as thirty foot from Apothecary's Hall Road. Or, and I know the the thing says from the from the grade, but the problem is is that over time, the our grade has, we naturally lowered our grade, just just the natural, I forgot how many feet it goes down going towards the DC, but it's like the the grade has just gone down. And that's not, you know, it shouldn't, probably shouldn't have gone down as far as it's got down. We we're not mining it, it's just, it's just, that's what has happened. So we have taken measures this year to actually knock down a good chunk of that pile. And as you can see, we process, that's just what we sold, that's not what we processed. So on top of that, we processed, there's a probably a a finished pile there of twenty thousand yards that we're, you know, getting ready to sell. So we processed quite a bit of material this year versus how much we brought in.
Do you get noise complaints when you're processing, since there are neighbors on the map that like you?
I have not had any noise complaints. And actually, like, we've we've done noise studies from an insurance perspective, as far as from like hearing and whatnot. Once you get two hundred feet away from the plant, it's pretty quiet. If you go to RCPC when we're running, the the pile that we have there, the sound barriers that we have there, you don't even know that we're running until you get up next to the plant.
My first question is kind of for staff. So since the lapse since two thousand and nineteen, this is now being considered as a new applicant, new permit versus an extension or renewal. Okay, so are there any new changes to the regulations that have come up since two thousand and nineteen that now we'd have to look at for additional terms or conditions or anything that was that wasn't required back then that would be required now?
So the complicated part is for the last, whatever he listed, X number of decades, they've been renewing a special permit on a yearly basis. The permit terminated, so they weren't subject to all of the standards that are on the books now.
Right.
And now they are.
Right.
So that's, that's the tricky part. We are not dealing with subdivision standards, so we can't waive things. I agree with Tim's evaluation of our regs and that they don't necessarily envision the facility that's being operated here. But but I, commission's not really in a position to be able to say, well, A doesn't really apply. And so for all intents and purposes, the the previous permit, the conditions here, these are essentially just suggested future conditions. There's no, there's no carryover that we can really deal with. I read through all the requirements and everything related to COVID and legislative changes for permit expirations and extensions, and just nothing that would apply here.
Because the way I see it is their point is, is this a volume reduction or is it a a wage treatment? So to how it's possible now?
So I I have been trying to to pay attention and look through the regs and figure out what options we have. And I have a couple of thoughts, I don't think we can solve this here, but perhaps we can confer after the meeting with the applicant. There's a couple of things that you can do. Obviously, the thing that nobody wants to do is say, do you do a text amendment or a variance. The other option is that the the bulk table for allowed uses has a catch-all phrase in the front that basically says the commission has the right to determine if any use meets the intent of the regulations, which means you have some flexibility perhaps to say that this may actually be more served under a different section. And so I was trying to go through to see are there other uses that are allowable? One of the things that could could we commit the result of the facility under what they're coming in and and essentially issue them an outdoor storage special use permit, because that's allowed as an accessory special use. So there are a couple of different things that I'm trying to look at, but but at the end of the day, we can't just say the things that didn't apply before, we're just going to skip over.
Right.
The last thing that I'll mention is, and then again, this is, I'm thinking about this as we go, so I don't have answers, but there's certain legislation which says, recently, which basically said, yes, commissions can put timeframes on permits, and they are legal. Up until about a year ago, we didn't have case law that supported that. But there's another sort of section of law that says you can't, you can't strip someone's right to a non-conforming use without considering their intent to continue such a use. I don't know which one of those carries more weight, and if they can establish that they have clear intent to continue operating, there may be some room for us to say, we're gonna, we're gonna look at that intent, and because of that, it's not appropriate for us to establish new criteria simply because of the facility and change.
Question, did the operation shut down in twenty nineteen or did it not continue? I'd just like to add to what Mike said, though, in response to your question about this being new, any new regulations, this volume reduction facility regulation was established and was the basis of the original, of the special use permit that was issued excuse me, in two thousand and nine. So the original special use permit did have carryover from the prior recycling permit, but it was based on this regulation back in two thousand and nine. I don't believe any of these conditions didn't exist then, or any of these requirements in the volume reduction facility. So at that point in time, the commission at the time did approve it under the volume reduction facility with the conditions that you see in front of it.
Yeah, usually you guys just come in and you think, look at anybody, any violations and complaints, and they this, no, no, it's good to go.
Right, since that time, when you come for the renewal, that's how.
That's all usually goes.
The speaking point now is the.
I know.
Well, any questions?
Consider it a gravel pit, would that be an easier way? Not performing extraction, I think our reg used the term extraction. I was reading the definitions, and it it doesn't meet most of the the criteria listed in the volume reduction. And if you look at the mulch and chipping and composting, there's parts of that that apply, but then at the end, it says we're organic material. So so I'm trying to see if there's a way we can, well, lopping screens. Screens and would it be similar to what lopping, I've been in the operation, I know what the operation does, but would it be similar to what lopping road does? You know. They crush, lopping screens, gravel out, separates them.
I think, Joe, that a lot of times gravel pits have that portion of their business approved as an accessory use to the gravel pit.
The other question is the drainage that's under the pot.
I assume that's not functioning too well tomorrow.
Okay.
I am pretty sure it's running off, but the the site, everything still gets to the the site is essentially.
In the way the pitch is, but I've just, that was, I guess, my own curiosity is, okay, we got some next drain, but what are they draining?
Yeah, to be honest with you, I'm I'm not certain what the purpose of those drains was initially anyway. But right now, because it's all clean material and it's just run out from. But right now, because it's all clean material, and it's just run out from the clean pile, it all gets into the infiltration patients, controlled regardless.
And witnessing the pile, it does grow and drop, and grow and drop, it, you know, seasonally, you can see where it grows all of a sudden, and then it. You know, it drops down. I mean, it's an environmentally friendly product, because it's all recycled. Other than that, now, did Len have any comments, or?
Yeah, I can read them, we got them yesterday, so I can, I'll include them in the next packet.
Did you get them?
So it says, he's reviewed the plans, corresponded some drainage memo, infiltration basin that he commented on in twenty eighteen has been constructed and found to be working adequately. This past year, there have been several instances of mud being tracked into the roadway, I recommend a condition of approval such that applicant can come up with a better plan and minimize these instances. This mitigation measure must be proven by the town engineer, and he takes no other exceptions to plans this, and then. That was from Len Norton, town engineer. Couple of other thoughts that I had, as far as handling some of the questions that have come up. We can establish a max elevation for the pile, so we know how many feet we think it ought to be, and if the grade goes down a foot or goes up a foot, at the end of the day. We know that the max elevation should not exceed this, we can also look at once you're in the next thing, there's not here yet. We can look at a total void in either cubic yards or dimension, the pile shall not exceed this by this, or this much in height. But an elevation is established regardless of where you start. So those, those are two thoughts that I had, kicked around as far as how we can answer those questions.
Thinking about the definition of height for structure being the average of ten feet away from the structure. That would be your base elevation, I'm not saying ten feet in this instance, but some sort of baseline. But you're fine, but you'll measure from here. And they, they're testing upon.
Problem with that is the base might grow, and the elevation will change. They can increase the volume, and if you're gonna say it's twenty feet from the base, and all of a sudden the base moves out one feet, now you're thinking elevation forty, so.
Right.
That's.
We just need something that's clear and understood by all. And then my other question we didn't talk about was dust, there. There's a house on Apothecary's Hall Road, it had a lot of dust complaints. It related to a different operation, but I'm wondering if there is dust from the crushing, and if so, what do you do for dust control?
Can we go back to the elevation just one short, it's with their understanding that the elevation was from Apothecary's Hall Road. Why can't we say that this is the base?
It, to me, it has to be clear to everybody, and they have to certify that they're.
Well, that would be an easy way, that would be a very simple way, rather than just trying to figure out where you take it because of slope changes. If we just said from Apothecary's Hall Road, thirty feet maximum, that's very easy. To be, to be verified there, or the zoning enforcement office.
Yes, it needs to be. Good for the zoning enforcement officers stand, and it has to not get so large that it becomes a monstrosity and a dump.
So that would be my suggestion.
How about dust control?
So regarding the dust control, actually, I'll, I'll talk about Len's comment as well regarding the mud, so we. We have, on the, on the actual plant itself, we have water, we also run a water truck around the entire facility twice a day. So to keep, because most of our dust has nothing to do with the crushing, the crushing operation, it's more to do with the trucks driving through the, through the gravel pit. Or not, not the gravel pit, but to, on the dirt road of the, of it. What we have done is we've actually installed a very large two-inch stone tracking pad that goes up to the scale, so when people get. When trucks get loaded down where our material stockpiles are, they come through the two-inch tracking stone onto the scale, and from the scale they go on to pavement. So I know we had, like, like, after rainstorms, we're very cognizant about, because that's typically when we see mud tracking out into the road, it's like after a heavy rain. We've always been very, like, conscientious about that, I will say that, and. I do very frequently hire a outside third-party sweeping service to come through, take care of the road without the town ever having to be involved. We've got other contractors that are all right within my, you know, within a couple hundred feet of my entrance, that don't always do the same thing. So, you know, we've had the people in Apothecary's Hall, I've been here for other things where they have complimented. The, the noise, like, the fact that we keep our noise down, that we do keep our dust down, we've had people speak on behalf of us before. I just want to remind the commission of that, when, when other gravel pits were going for their extensions, they've come and spoken highly of what we've done. We do try to be a good operator in the town, we really do, we recognize, like I said, we recognize the dust, and then. As far as the dust around the plant, like I said, we've got spray bars all over the plant to keep, to keep that down, because again, we have people working there, and we need to keep the dust down.
Commission's questions are answered, I'll turn to the public in the room. Is there anyone who has a question or wants to comment for the record? No one asking to comment in the room, how about the people who joined us over Zoom? Is there anyone who would like to comment on this application? None? I guess, so, on this. And Steph needs time to figure out the. What I think to do so that we can continue discussion with the applicant after we get. More input from the staff, would be to continue the hearing. For our next regular meeting.
Is, is two weeks adequate time, or? Or this? Then I'd like to make a motion that we continue the public hearing. For application P Z twenty-one dash twenty-five thirty-three, Apothecary's Hall Road, special use permit for a volume reduction facility. Connecticut, to our next scheduled meeting, which will be September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Second to that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That's unanimous. My phone at twenty-eight, we will have a very long meeting, because we have the joint meeting with all the other. I don't know if we wanna break them into two back-to-back meetings, so the public. You know, welcome to sit, you know everything. If we have a discussion on all, on board's area of what to do with open space priorities. And we have continuing public hearing, but the potential new public hearing may not appear. For the staff, considering that.
Watch for you.
Thank you. Next public hearing is the zone change application for S J A three. Requesting zone change from R three to M F D D. For land from only known as quarry metal subdivision. The application was a little bit confusing, because in some places it has R one crossstop. And M F D D the nanny, and other places. Less clear, so it would be helpful to have a little overview from, yeah, looking on what.
Hello, everyone, Barry Pennett representing S J K Properties on this application. Just to go over some quick housekeeping, I am submitting for the record, the act of danger for posting of the hearing sign, and also the proof of mailing. The application before you is for a zone change from the R three to the multifamily development district, also known as the M F D D. The use will remain as residential, being all single-family detached houses. This application was amended to the M F D D in lieu of the R one, which was, which has a density factor of two. And which could yield eighty houses versus the sixty-six that we are requesting. So originally, we had submitted for the R one zone, but hence, we did have a text amendment that was approved back on July twenty-seventh, so we did amend this application to reflect. That text amendment and go forward with the N S D D zone change. Just quick history, in two thousand and six, we did receive approval for this property for forty-eight homes to be serviced by public water and public sewer. Unfortunately, this approval has recently expired due to statutory timeframes. Last October, I was before this commission presenting a conceptual development, which was received well by this commission. But did create mass hysteria amongst the neighborhood of Sullivan Farm Road. Since then, we repeatedly decreased our density limits to reduce the community spheres, and as such, on July twenty-seventh. The commission, this commission approved a text amendment to allow property within an R three zone. Be rezoned to M F D D, as long as it met certain criteria, which I will go over that in, in a few minutes. The purpose of this project is we are proposing individual, single-family residential homes that will fall under a homeowners association, an H O A. Our project, which utilizes an H O A, falls under a condominium or community association type development. According to section eight oh two point two-two of the regulations. Title Change of Zone states that no development plan or special apartment for residential condominiums. Shall be approved by the commission except in the M F D D zone. Because our project will be a private development that will utilize the H O A, a zone change to the M F D D is necessary. Hence, the tax amendment, which was approved on July twenty-seventh. So, the property that's being requested for a zone change is known as the quarry metal subdivision. This subdivision is comprised of fifty-four parcels of, which include building lots, roadways, access strips. And is located on the east side of town, on the East Windsor Ellington Town Line. Current access to this property. Property is currently accessed by two areas, one off of Devo Street, which is at the town line, and also at Midway off of the. That end on Sullivan Farm Road. This property is serviced by public water and to be serviced by public sewer. The site's combined area is approximately sixty-four acres, with forty-eight acres being entirely in East Windsor, the remaining is in Ellington. And you can see the town line right here going through the property, this is the outline of the property. So what we are proposing. In lieu of this subdivision, in single-family residential development. This plan has been circulating around in the past, there has been no change to this plan, so what was presented back in the past is also being presented to you today. This plan represents a condominium project with sole access off of Devo Street. Having sixty-six houses, which are all going to be single-family detached units, this is a conceptual rendering of a house that we're envisioning to be put on that property. The family change depending upon the style, but the concept is trying to work with this type of a scenario. What this does is it creates a single access off of Devo Street. Versus a subdivision, which would have created a dual access due to safety requirements within the zoning regulations, and would have had a direct street access through Sullivan Farm Road. This type of proposal eliminates that type of development altogether. So I want to go over how this property, with this configuration, is represented in a text amendment that was approved on July twenty-seventh. So, in the regulations, section eight oh two point four of the M F D D regulations. The first thing is that no area shall be rezoned to a multifamily development district without the submission of a concept plan, which designates a specific development type as the deconstructive. Hence, this conceptual plan is what we are presenting, we are proposing a condominium-type project, all single-family detached houses. No different than a regular subdivision, except the density does change in a particular development. The site needs to be at least four acres an area. This is in excess of four acres, we're talking about forty-eight solely, acre solely in East Windsor. The site is to be serviced by public water and municipal sewer. As I stated, this site is to be serviced by public water and public sewer, currently, there is public water that is, has been installed many months ago. Which follows the main road. And also, which is, I believe, services Hemlock Corp. and another subdivision that crosses the street on this road. This was the main reason why this configuration happened, because we had to follow the main waterline that was installed, I believe, over twenty years ago. The site to be located, may be located within a rural area, this is part of the text amendment that happened in July, provided that all of the following criteria have been met. One, the property to be rezoned is located within the R three zone, this property is in the R three zone. Except for properties on a state highway, the density shall be reduced to one point five dwelling units per acre of developable land unattract. As I stated, we are increasing the density from one unit per acre to one point five, originally, back in October when I presented this. We went with a conceptual idea of doing four units, obviously, that was too excessive, and we did reduce that over time, almost a year later. To the point of coming up to one point five houses per acre. Number three, the properties to be developed is limited to detached, single-family residential units. Once again, as shown here, we are doing individual houses, these are not apartments, they're not duplexes, they're not common wall. Buildings or structures, they're all individual houses, just falling under an H O A, a homeowners association. Number four, any secondary amenities shall be from an arterial or collector roadway in accordance with section eight oh two point one seven. What that means is that we are reducing the secondary access, which originally, through a subdivision, would have required us to go through Sullivan Farm Road. The only thing we will have will be an emergency access, with a gated access drive to Sullivan Farm Road. That is just in the event of emergency apparatus or any type of emergency that happens at a site, very similar to the mansions. Like Canyon Ridge up Route one forty off of Yatski, they have that, that emergency access, that is not a main access, there'll be no traffic through that, just solely for emergency services. And number five, which, which, I'm not sure if a lot of people understand this one, but the site is not contiguous with another M F D D zone parcel. What that means is any parcel going for a zone change cannot be contiguous with another M F D D zone parcel. So let me lay out, lay this one out, there's only two properties in town that this tax amendment applies to. This property and a property to the north. If this zone change gets approved, this now becomes an M F D D zone, the property to the north cannot be an M F D D zone, because it's now gonna be contiguous to this site. So hence, this regulation, this text change, will only apply to one piece of property in town. This is the one that it applies to. With that said, I just wanted to do a comparison of, of a subdivision and what it entails with the community and the neighborhoods versus what we are proposing. So, a subdivision, or the previous forty-eight lot subdivision that was approved. What that would do to the community is, one, it would provide a cut through from Devo Street. Going through Sullivan Farm Road, and potentially even through Hemlock Corp., it would definitely be a cut through. This subdivision will also allow possible future development of the property to the north, as well as property to the east going into Ellington, therefore increasing traffic. And access through the existing neighborhoods. The subdivision itself becomes a town road, therefore, now that the Department of Public Works. Therefore, now the Department of Public Works has to maintain that road, which also increases the potential for increasing the property taxes. And further, and lastly, the Sullivan Farm Road has a cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac would be removed because we are, we would definitely need to have access running or secondary means of access going through this road. But therefore, that cul-de-sac would be removed and that development would not have that rural feel in that area. So that's what the subdivision would do. Now versus the planned residential development that we are proposing. So this planned residential will prevent access through Sullivan Farm Road and eliminate impact to the neighborhood, except for the emergency access drive. It's all, that is necessary, that just for emergency purposes. This proposal eliminates the cut through from Bebo Street going towards Sullivan Farm Road as well as into Hemlock Court. It eliminates future development into Ellington. It eliminates future development and connection to Hemlock, where as I stated. It also eliminates the town road. This becomes a private road, so therefore, there's going to be no town maintenance involved for this. And it will keep the cul-de-sac for Sullivan Farm Road. So in conclusion, we are proposing individual, single-family residential homes that will fall under a homeowners association, which requires the MFDD designation. All homes will be single-family detached houses. We are proposing sixty-six homes versus forty-eight that were previously approved. That sixty-six homes propose over a total of sixty-four acres, which is roughly a density of one, if you look at it as the whole tract. This property has always been slated for development and we believe this concept makes the most sense for all reasons mentioned. The tax amendment was approved to allow for this type of development. And as I mentioned before, this is really the only property that that tax amendment applies to. And originally, we did do the zone change application for the R one, which was the alternative. But that density requirement is actually two units per acre. Would be more than happy to go that route too, which would yield eighty-eight houses. But we have family that lives in that development, where we live in town, we're developing this property. We have no intention, we're trying to do the best thing for everybody and, and we feel that we have reached sound and ground and this makes the most sense for, for everyone involved. With that, we move back to, thank you.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions at this time?
I just want, Matt, are you talking about that changing this to an MFDD would prevent development around? They would still be able to develop under the underlying zone, zone. They'd still be able to develop under the R three regulations, correct?
They wouldn't have access through our property. They could do whatever they want on their own property, sure. But, but the property to the north is they hit the first water table. They, they cannot get some existence out there. Their only avenue is to connect to sewer and that cannot happen once this happens. It's not going to be council or to be private. Now, if we did a regular subdivision, yes, now you can extend the roads, extend that sewer line, bring it into there. That, that does work, but not in this particular.
So the fact that you're going to be a private community, that, that also prohibits you from allowing anyone else to hook up to your sewer connection?
Correct.
Would the homeowners association decide to enter into an agreement with somebody to hook up?
I suppose they could, but the only property that it could affect would be the property to the north, but no one else because all the other properties surrounding areas are outside of the sewer void area or they're in a sewer void area.
And when you put in a single-family condo type of community, wouldn't there be amenities, not just houses?
According to the regulations, certain amenities need to be made, yes. Originally, in the grand scheme of things, I had a clubhouse, tennis courts and all that stuff. All that's going to be pulled back, obviously, due to economics. But that involves, you can have open space, you can have walking trails out there. That all works as far as that requirement, if we do have plenty of area.
So I mean, in the, in the center area there, is that, is that a future plan you're saying to add amenities in there?
There, would it be a walkway around the exterior or you'll get to that when?
Yeah, when, when.
Development.
Correct, when the development happens, that, that's definitely going to be part of the
Discussion.
Discussion and what needs to be done according to regulations. But there's a lot of room there for open spaces. We could do a lot of things, but having a clubhouse, that, that's, I could tell you right now, that's not going to happen.
Any other questions if this comes from the commission? Staff have questions? Send it over to the board?
Nothing.
Okay, then we'll start with the public in the room. Is there anybody who would like to offer a comment or ask a question?
Who's first?
I proceeded off from one oh two Reservoir Road. When you did your presentation, you used condos and HOA interchangeably. I know a condo association is different than HOA, so I'm actually asking, what are you proposing? Is this a HOA or is it a condo association? You can't use the interchange for you in the conversation.
Doug may answer that.
Yes, please.
The HOA is a homeowners association, which encompasses the entire property for maintenance issues. So that, the intent is that the association, whether it's a condo or HOA, maybe I'm misstating which is which, but the intent is simply the homeowners of the development will each pay a fee, monthly fee, for the maintenance of the site, which will include for landscaping, grass cutting, lawn care as well as snow removals during the winter and heap up drainage maintenance and the so I apologize, I'm using the wrong term, but the intent is an association to pay those fees.
But as I understand from myself looking at properties, an HOA that I, properties that I've looked at, those are homes where people maintain their own property and land. A condo association, because I live in a condo, is a, is a unit where the association itself cares for the land and the building. So I think there needs to be some clarification of if you're going to be developing this as a condo association or is this being developed as a homeowners association? Because they're both different in how you maintain it.
Understood and I, I, I do realize, I believe that's more semantics at this point because the intent is still to be in an MFDD to have either of those ideas. So the intent is you're going to own your own house and you're going to be probably maintaining the outside within five, ten feet of your property, but the rest of the ground is going to be maintained by service.
So the, if the house needs a roof, it's on the homeowner.
It's on the homeowner.
And the same with the painting on the outside.
It's on the homeowner. It's their own house, they just don't have to maintain it. They don't have to mow the lawn anymore, they don't have to shovel the driveway. That's the intent there.
I still think there, I think, I just me personally, as a resident, I think there needs to be a clarification.
That's more he's got to work out when he's actually going to sell it.
But I know that is, that is a question that, you know, people are concerned in the area whether this is going to be turned into condos, maybe he comes back, gets approval and do they get turned into condos? And, and the whole concept of single-family homes has changed. And so that, I just, it's just a question.
I do want to make one more addition, which probably come up later on tonight. Our intent is to develop this property. In the event we actually sell this property to a developer, they've got to do the same thing. The regulations are very clear. It has to be detached, single-family units. They, they have to, this is the layout of the roads. That cannot change because the infrastructure is already in the ground. So nothing is really going to change at that point. I, I know that was going to come up later tonight, but I just, taking it now, our intent is to develop this property. And then, nothing's going to change, whoever owns it down the road. It's still going to be the same type of development. Can't be anything different. No apartments can happen, no complexes, multi-structure cannot happen according to the regulations.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like a chance to comment? I need you to state your name.
Yes, my name is Burma Shai, the one you showed. First, I'd like to comment, you bravely insulted my neighbors that live on Sullivan Farm Road by saying they're disagreeing with your development was mass hysteria. I am personally insulted by using those terms and I take insult from my neighbors that use that term. When somebody disagrees with you, doesn't mean they're hysterical. That was a very personal thing that I took and I really appreciate it. Let's see, who's going to be supplying the, the public water and the municipal sewer? That's all in the East Windsor, Ellington, something like that at all.
I got to address the commission. Protocol is for the question to be asked to the commission and then the commission to.
Okay.
I just don't want to get into a contest here. I've seen this twenty times and I want to go down that road early on. The commission would like me to answer any questions, please, please let me know.
Is it fair to assume that Connecticut Water Company would provide the public water service?
As I stated, the Connecticut Water Company has a name that's already running through the property. So yes, it would be Connecticut Water. As far as a public sewer, public sewer will be brought in. I believe the intersection is at Perry Lane or Skinner Road in that section. So it would be brought up a mile down the road at the expense of us. At the town, the town has no, no process associated with this.
Yes, and so the single access that you're talking about, the one emergency exit I lived in town for many years and that was one of the biggest complaints the volunteer fire department had was single access developments. If you look at the last fifteen, twenty years developments in that town, there's a lot of cul-de-sacs that are just single roads that are ending cul-de-sacs into the woods. And there have been instances, only a couple, but there have been instances where the beginning of the road was blocked off. So everybody on that road didn't go to work that day, didn't receive any mail, didn't receive any other services on that road until emergency personnel came and cleared the blockage. That's one of the biggest things, the fire department had a complaint in the town development. And I think a single access, even though there is a second emergency access, I think the single access should be looked at by our own emergency services personnel. And also, this is a question that's above my head and I would like your professional answer on this. There's been a lot of social media discussion about if this development gets a change, there's other parcels of land in town that it may apply to, there are certain acreage that this exception is to apply to. I honestly, I have a brain injury, I'm legally blind in my left eye, I can't, my right eye. I can't spend a very long time reading and quite honestly, I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed because I have a TBI. And I wasn't able to do the research into it to see if there are other parcels of land or land that would, this could possibly apply to. I read many posts on social media, had some personal discussions with people who made those posts. And I don't know what the answer is, so I was looking for a finite answer from you guys. If this changes passed, if this change is accepted, would absolutely, finitely only apply to one single property in town and never any other. I do live down the street from this and it's taken, the development that's going on now already has taken away the cause I rule this of my road. I have to go to my mailbox across the street, having a TBI and having physical disabilities. I've been caught in the road quite a few times with the excess traffic that's come on my street. And certainly adding this many more homes is going to add quite a bit more. Not only in the construction vehicles will be coming, but once they're open, the residents will be living there. I certainly have respect and I applaud anybody that wants to make the most amount of money they can off their land. That's the point of development, you know, good for you, you had a good investment strategy when you got it. You know, good for you and I applaud you and I respect you for that, but I don't like the way it's going to be affecting my section of town. I also don't like the fact that it is going to be a single access road due to the circumstances I saw in previous towns I've lived in. But I would also like an answer to that to absolutely ensure, to guarantee, to find every answer that this will be the one and only parcel of land now and in the future that will be affected by this change. Thank you.
I guess to answer your question, we don't know because land changes hands. The town planner tried to do an analysis and then did not complete it because any parcel can be sold and merged with another parcel. And what will happen in the future is totally unknown. So.
At this point now, is that the absolute only parcel of land that's to cancel?
Yeah, what this is, is not whether or not we approve change to the regulations, that's already been done. What this is, is about this particular parcel and if it should be rezoned from R three to MFDD. So we don't have the answer for you with respect to if it's possible that another parcel could be rezoned or could come in and request this, we don't know. At this point, it didn't look like there were other parcels. So it didn't look like it was going to be a widespread land use in this town. But there's no way of knowing and each application is heard and considered.
Of course, two different property owners could combine.
Right.
Combined and make, but we can't predict that, we don't.
We don't know what will happen.
That has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Really.
Tonight, we're just talking about a change of this one piece of property only. The, the zone, the change to the MFDD rig, that's when it could have affected multiple properties in town. This is just strictly just this one piece of property that he wants to do a zone change on.
And with respect to emergency access, if, if we get to a point, there's actually a site plan and a site plan review. That would be reviewed by the fire marshal and we would get the input on what they think is appropriate. But at this point, this is a concept that's under discussion for consideration by the commission. It's not a site plan.
May I ask the developer question?
Please.
Eric, you have done a traffic study. I'm sure there's concern about the kind of traffic going up and down Bebo Street. And you, you've looked into that, haven't you?
Um, we, we have not done a full study on that property and we have not. But we did have, when we originally did the forty lots of division, I believe that was taken into account and we are increasing only by eighteen houses. But that is the requirement of the special permit that a traffic study is required. Now, the traffic study comes back and says that sixty-six houses doesn't work, well, guess what? We can't do sixty-six houses.
But that would happen at the site plan phase, not at this.
Because I'm sure that's a conservative.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I have another, I have a quick question too. It appears that the distance, the, the new versus the old to the new, it looks like the houses are a lot farther away than the existing development now. Am I correct in this statement?
What do you mean further away?
Well, it, it looks like the original plan.
Those are lots.
The lots.
Lots, yeah.
But I mean, are you encroaching the neighbors, the neighborhood? Or it looks like you're doing less encroachment is what I'm saying.
Well, that's absolutely correct. We're actually pulling away from, from the property line. We're keeping everything tight to the existing roadway that's there.
It only appears you're close to one person and I think that person's in the room anyways.
And that would be my system, right. And the conceptual plan before you, there were different iterations. One was showing a hundred and fifty-six houses, then we went down to eighty-eight. It's very expensive, in fact, I assume, to keep drawing these things. So in this conceptual, I just started deleting houses. So that's why you may see some bigger gaps. This is just conceptual in a nature. But once again, the roadway presents you, we're kind of locked into that layout because of the infrastructure that's in place.
Okay, so is there anyone else in the room who wants to speak to the request to rezone this property from R three to MFDD? the request to rezone this property from R three to M F D D?
Please state your name for the record.
Gina Kutcher, thirty-four Sullivan Farm Road. My question is, at this stage, does there have to be a number of houses listed or is it still just conceptual and it can change?
It's not a site plan. It's conceptual, but there's.
The underlying rig limits the maximum that it can.
Okay, so I guess I agree too with my neighbor that stated that she resents the comment of mass hysteria because one hundred and fifty-six houses is what caused the upheaval in the neighborhood. Nobody opposed sixty-six single-family houses. They opposed one hundred and fifty-six houses. And if we had not opposed that, that's what we would have right now. So the concern is, is that number going to change? Is it going to go from sixty-six back to eighty, then back to a hundred acres?
Because of the density requirement that was adopted in the.
A lot of the trust eroded with a lot of the changes and not transparency. And so it's hard to believe that that's going to be the number that it's going to be at sixty-six because it's not stayed at one number. It's it's bounced all over and it only went down because we did oppose it.
The bottom line is, under the zoning regulations, if we were to approve it going to this M F D D zone, that's the maximum that.
But could it change with another person coming in and saying, we would like to change that?
What, one and a half units per acres?
And that's bottom line, no matter what, no matter who comes in, whoever develops it, no one can bump that up.
Correct.
Thank you.
I can make a quick statement. I know this is going to come up a lot, like, I apologize for for my outbursts with that comment of the hysteria. Just so everyone knows that our family has been threatened multiple times regarding this project. And maybe that came out wrong. I apologize. But you know, their comments to our family have been uncalled for as well. Put that on the record.
Okay, is there anybody else in the room who wants to speak? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Rick Webster, Eighties Wood Drive. My first recommendation, you gotta get a microphone up here because through these masks, even though I'm sitting back there, I'm having a hard time hearing. I got pretty good hearing except for my wife tells me what to do. My first question for this commission is, how much would these, there are sixty-six units, correct?
That's the maximum allowable.
Okay.
If this is a.
So my question for you, what would be the average retail value of each house sold? Come on, come on, folks. Let's, I'll start at a million and work down. We gotta go that direction. One million dollars per, five hundred thousand per?
We don't have any kind of, anything to tie to what it's going to be. How do we know?
How many square feet of these houses are going to be?
This is just a zoning change right now. When it comes with a with a site plan, then we'll have that information.
Okay, the other question I have is, why is it going to be an HOA versus a subdivision? I don't, still don't conceptually understand that.
Well, that's what the property owner wants.
And that's what multi-family development district was about. It allows for shared land use of the land under the project.
All right. But my question once again is just the average retail cost of each house. That's what I'm wondering. I wonder how it's going to affect my property value at Eighties Street Drive. That type of thing, you know.
I don't have an answer. We have a site plan, you know.
I'm sure all purpose, isn't gonna, isn't gonna build junk. He's gonna build high-end stuff. The more high-end houses he's gonna build, the more money he's gonna make.
So the next question is, it's one, basically one acre per house ballpark?
About three quarters.
Three quarters of an acre. Where in that development location of those houses is it gonna be? It's gonna be all the way, they all gonna be on depot side? Are they gonna be all the way in the back by the book that runs in the back there? Are they, is it going to be uniform spacing in there?
We don't have a site plan. We're not at that.
That stage here.
Okay, so what's the next stage here then?
What we're at is, should this parcel be rezoned from R three, which is single-family lots to a multi-family developed?
Okay.
That was a question on the table.
All right, thank you.
If I could, I'll appease that. The private metals on the corner of Eastwood, I mean, East Road and Eagle Street are on the market right now. I believe they're on the mark for four hundred and sixty to four hundred and eighty thousand. Our our guess is that this is going to be four hundred thousand plus. That's that's probably what's going to happen with this.
Two to twenty-five hundred square foot houses?
No, they're they're gonna be eighteen hundred per foot to twenty-two hundred square feet, couple houses. Again, envision of being, they're not going to be under three and I envision them over four. And exactly, that's why the market's happening.
Spending that kind of money, it means maybe we want some very upscale. You don't want just plain old cars.
It's not really my concern. But thank you.
Anybody else in the room who wants to comment? And really, what's on the table is the zone change. And we will turn to the people on Zoom. Is there anybody who would like to comment? It looks like Erica and Mike.
Jero, Erica Jero. Hi, hello, Erica Jero. We're one eighty-six depot. So you guys kind of touched a little bit on what my question or my concern is. One eighty-six is like directly across, I believe, from where the entrance would be now and from what I'm gathering from this discussion. It would be the only main entryway and exit from this, from these sixty-six units. We don't have sidewalks. We've brought it up a couple of times that we have a really bad traffic problem already, not capacity-wise, but just people speeding. We have a ton of cyclists, a lot of people ride motorcycles, a lot of people are active on our road and we've already seen, you know, a lot of accidents almost happening. Again, there are no sidewalks on our end of depot. And I think a lot of our neighbors, as well as us, who have children are really concerned that if the main entrance to this is right there, how would it impact all of us who are there? Would there be stop signs? Would sidewalks be put in something to give us a little bit of peace of mind? For an or an issue we already have, how much worse would it get adding, you know, sixty-six more houses? So you guys kind of touched on that a little bit and we just wanted to bring it up as a family that that is our major concern with this.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? It looks like iPhone has got a hand up.
Yes, I would like to make a comment. Being that this. Excuse me?
Could you identify yourself for the reference?
Michael Costa, one ninety-four Depot Street. Right across the street from where this proposed entrance and exit is going to be. It's, I can see where Old Farms in that area, Sullivan, out that way would be thrilled that this is not going to happen near them. My property is going to be the only one that's going to be affected by this entrance and exit here. Besides the fact of all the extra traffic coming through the town now.
There's a huge traffic.
There's a huge traffic problem already. And this is going to add a bunch more. And you're going to have sixty-six supposed houses trying to exit one street.
That's an horrible idea. Horrible idea.
Be quiet. I don't know. And Kemet said you didn't even do a study on it. Why would you not study on something that's going to be dumping on a small little street in the T, no less? I I don't understand that. The only study you did was how much money?
That's not just feeding the boat.
This is the zone change portion of the process. The traffic study comes with the site plan, part of the process when there's.
But he was both thinking about how it wasn't going to affect all those other people.
What about the people that live on Depot?
What about the people that live on Depot Street that it is going to affect?
There'll be a traffic study. It just isn't in this phase or process.
If and when a site plan comes before us, then that discussion will be had. Right now, that's not the discussion on the table.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who's on Zoom that would like to comment? I guess I haven't had a chance to say.
Hi, this is Roberta Handback. I own the property adjacent to the property that we're talking about. I have a forty-acre farm that is currently actively working to produce produce that is sold to Whole Market Foods. And my concern is about all of the runoff from these houses that are going in, going in and affecting my crops. Any studies, anything to say that that is going to be safe with all the sewage going in and the systems they're putting in and also the foot traffic, if they're planning to put walkways around that? Hopefully the walkways, there's some sort of a fencing setup that prevents them from coming over into my farmland.
All good questions, but again, like the prior comments, they are a part of the site plan review if it makes it through this rezoning phase.
That's even if we get a site plan.
If this continues and the site plan comes in, those would all be considered.
And what about the town of Ellington?
Well, and also have you, has there been any conversations with the town of Ellington? Because this is also going to affect them.
Do you have comments from the town? Okay, there was a letter submitted this afternoon. We can, you want to read it into the record?
I can.
Read into the record. We haven't seen.
So it says, and this is from the town planner, Lisa Mullin, yeah. She said, I'm emailing on behalf of the Ellington Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to the latest application by S J K Properties for land known as Corey Meadows. The land subject to the pending application was previously approved for forty-eight single-family lots, lots including drainage facilities in Ellington adjacent to Broadbrook. Prior applications suggest, and the pending application propose an increase to previously approved density. And for the pending application proposed density will increase by eighteen units for a total of sixty-six or one point five units per acre. Given the increase in density and potential changes to the drainage facilities adjacent to Broadbrook, previous concerns from Ellington P C C remain and are referenced below. By consensus, requested a memo be, this is a clip from their minutes, I think. Requested a memo be sent to the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission expressing concerns for increase to traffic on rural roads, increase in runoff and water quality issues, concerns for negative impact to wetlands and Broadbrook. During previous applications submitted by S J K Properties proposing text and map amendments, capital regional, region council of governments recommends East Windsor require a traffic study to analyze the impact a development may have on traffic flow in the area and to work with developers on true designs for onsite wastewater management, especially onsite for sites on or across the town border. Corey Meadows of Butts, Ellington, with access from Depot Street and East Windsor, which is named Broadbrook Road in Ellington. The Ellington P C C supports recommendations from the crop. While technical reports like traffic and drainage are not typically required at the time of zone change application, please consider discussing anticipated increase to impervious surface, changes or new drainage facilities, size of housing units, parenthetically square footage, and number of bedrooms per unit in the unit the developer expects to present during future special term and site development applications. If the zone change is approved, please be advised a budding land in Ellington is zoned rural agricultural residential, one unit per acre and is not eligible for multi-family development. And Broadbrook Road in Ellington is designed as a rural road and not a collector or arterial street. On behalf of the Ellington P C C, thank you for your time and inspiration.
Whoever asks, Ellington's comments are very similar to, this is in East Windsor's comments. And all those concessions are critical at the site plan. Assuming this project moves that far.
As expressed earlier from other people at the, one of the previous meetings, they had said from S J K that they had, were going to reach out to all the butters and all the people that were concerned with this project. They have never once reached out to me. That's all I have.
Okay, is there anybody else who, Mr. Brown?
Yes, hi. This question, I guess, is from Mark. Mark, how many units have you asked the W P C A for sewage?
Is that something you can answer or?
How many units have you asked for at the W P C A?
Yes, how many, how many have you asked the W P C A that you're going to give them?
Well, none. We haven't gotten that far yet. That's part of design.
Oh, it's not sixty-six?
We are approved for forty, we're previously approved for forty-eight. However, we cannot go into design until we go for the zone change.
Correct.
I believe the capacity is there for well over a hundred and fifty, but.
So.
That's not part of this.
They're at thirty. My question is, you have an agreement with Hemlock Court three Riot Corporation for cities, for the city sewer, you're going to let them use your pump station to pump all the way up to Perry Lane. My question is, you must have some type of conceptual plan from them. How many units they plan on putting on their property of fifty-three acres?
Any conceptual designs were all done back twenty years ago. There is nothing pending with them. We have no affiliation with them. Any deals had to do with the public water that was installed over twenty years ago. That that's, that's all there is. And Riot Corp, I believe, sold to a different developer or to a different owner and they're farming the land, as far as I know.
Twenty-ten, you made an agreement with the W P C A with them for city water and city sewer? You were paid five hundred thousand dollars?
I would not pay anything.
What's that, sir?
I would not pay anything.
Well, your family was. It's it's in the meetings of the W P C A back in twenty-ten.
What's that have to do with this, this public board?
It has to do with.
Personal question.
It has to do with the fifty-three acres that is sitting behind Hemlock Court and Aspen Drive.
But what we have on the table is.
All those questions, capacity of a sewer riot, et cetera, all come with the site plan and we don't have a site.
The word.
The question is, is out of order, number one. And number two, I think that's a very personal question to question somebody, how much money they receive personally.
But what I would say is, this before us is this particular parcel, not what somebody else is planning for their parcel.
Well, Mr. Gowdy just said a few minutes ago that two properties could merge together. Well, what's the, what's the key, Riot Corporation and Mr. Kemet to merge the two pieces of property together?
What's to happen with anything? We don't know. We don't know.
What's on the table right now for consideration is this particular parcel.
Well, if you're only going to let one piece of property do this in the whole town, I would consider that spot zoning.
We've discussed that thoroughly. We talked about that legally. We talked about zoning regulations. It's not spot zoning. But maybe you run back to the town planner, he can explain it better than I can.
I hope you guys got legal counsel involved and made that contract. Okay.
The only thing that I would say is that the reason why it's such, it's so difficult to answer the question related to the total universe of properties eligible for this type of zone change is that properties change configuration every single day. Even if this property were to be combined with another adjacent parcel, it, it does not mean that the, the overreaching MFDD zone would then expand to that fifty plus acres. That would, a zone changes for a specific piece of property, which is described in the legal notice. So he could buy half of the parcels in town, but simply because he does that and it's one contiguous piece of land, the zone change then doesn't apply to that, that entire expansive parcel. He would then need to come back in for a zone change and demonstrate compliance with something we know they won't be able to demonstrate compliance for. So the answer to this discussion of spot zoning, as we discussed in the previous applications, spot zoning has to check multiple boxes. Applying to one property in town is something that's included in that, but is not the, the trigger point. There are multiple, more than one, there's more than one piece of property as he identified that, that this would apply to today. However, because properties change all the time, this is not the only property in perpetuity that it could apply to. So that is, that is where there's a bit of a disagreement between the way the language reads now and what may be the case down the road. This was all something that applied to the text amendment, not what's before us. The only other thing that I, I want to include at this point, because there may be people participating that weren't here for the previous application, is that the next point, the third step in this process, we had a text change, zone change, then we go to special permit, which is what the commission refers to as a site plan, requires a public hearing. So all of the discussion related to the nuts and bolts of the project related to density, unit size, house, all of that will be up for discussion. There will be a hearing. People will be notified if that happens. So we're not pushing you off because the commission doesn't want to consider those comments. We have to be very careful that we discuss it at the right time. I just want to make sure everybody knows that that will be a public hearing.
Okay, is there anybody else on Zoom that wants to state something for the record? There's Joshua. Want you to say something?
Yes. I'd just like to note my opposition to the change to MFDD. I think that it increases the population in that area, contrary to the best interest of the town. We're a rural side of town. We should stay rural and that is doing the exact opposite. That's it.
Anyone else who hasn't had a chance to comment? Okay. Elena and George?
Hey, George, State Seventy Eastwood Drive. I've attended all the meetings relative to this issue and I don't want to pull any mass hysteria. And I find that comment very insulting. And the apology quite empty. But to the point, I don't see how this could be considered not to be spot zoning. The whole purpose of the text amendment was to make this piece of land more profitable for the Chemets. And during Mr. Kevin's speech today, he clearly stated that if he gets his zoning change approval, he'll have the only property in boardwork that this would apply to. I, I mean, this whole process could be written in a book under the definition of spot zoning. Made to try to make it appear to be not so. But in the end, the whole and only purpose of this text amendment and zoning change is to make this piece of profit, piece of property more profitable for the Chemets.
Thank you for your comment. I feel like in considering the concept of multifamily, single family home on shared ownership land wasn't about one person, one property. It was about development options for the town. And I personally believe that you can get a very nice development under shared land ownership and it will be maintained well over time because there is an association taking care of the land. So I personally don't see this as spot zoning and the one and only. We don't know if anybody else will come forward to pursue this concept. At this point, this is the only person we're aware of. But that doesn't mean there won't be another someday, somewhere in town.
Well, isn't it a little unusual that a text amendment is authored by the person requesting it?
That's how it happens when somebody requests a change to the zoning regulations. Sometimes the town staff drafts something and sometimes an applicant drafts something.
I, I still believe the only reason this was brought up and agreed to was to appease the Chemets. And it was a, a great deal of effort put into the wording to try to make it appear that it was not spot zoning. And as far as the question of what other properties in town this will be applicable, that question has been ignored or dodged for the entire discussion.
That's right.
The question would be, what is the snapshot in time today? When the question was asked, what is the snapshot in time of all the properties that this would be eligible for? And the answer was, well, we don't know because things change. Yes, of course, things change, but that was not the question. The question was, where are we right now at this point in time? As a snapshot, what properties would come onto potentially this change?
I'm planning on going to answer your question.
So, you know, I think that the reason why we weren't able to do the full analysis was that we don't, we basically required that we have all of the geographic data related to the various trigger points that are on here. And, and we simply don't have that data to be able to run that analysis to give you a number of parcels. We reviewed and tried to run the numbers based on the the property use and size and some of the other characteristics that we, we would, were able to pull from assessment data. But we weren't able to drill down to the, the fine sort of granular level to, to give you a snapshot of, say, this exact number of properties. And the challenge and the concern that I have in, in establishing for the record that this applies to twenty five properties is that the next day someone can combine two pieces of contiguous land, which requires an overview by the town. And then someone will come in and say, you told me twenty five, and it's actually third. And so I, we don't want to create a sense of, of a cap or a ceiling for the applicability of this because we don't control that list. I, I don't have the Excel data sheet that we were working on to be able to pull it up right here and tell you what that number is or what that list looked like. I'd be happy to try to sharpen my pencil a little bit.
But it was more than one.
At the time, yes. And, and, and at the request of the commission and staff, the text amendment was dialed back to not apply to multiple zones because there was concern that this would happen in multiple areas. The, the text amendment was originally for, for the.
R two and R three.
Or eight, right, yeah. There were two zones that was requested. We, we took that after to, to further reduce the capacity because of that concern. That was, that was something that we, we approved with the condition.
But anyway, is there anyone else? Oh, Michael Costa wanted to ask or state something for the record?
Yes, one ninety four Depot Street. I'm wondering why we're having the meeting and, and consider changing the zoning on this when we don't have all the information about this. It seems kind of vague. You know, we're not sure what's what and this is that and, and and it's asking someone to make a big step in this town to make a change and we don't have half the information that we need. It's very concerning to me. And I'm sure many other people in this area.
It's a process we are working under and the way that the state works, so.
But I understand the process, but I mean, if you don't have information that is very pertinent to the fact that you're making a change to a zoning, how can you consider it even? Well, you know, I mean, if you go to buy a car and you don't have the money to go buy a car, why are you even there? You know what I mean? You have to have all the information. You have to have all the stuff. You, you need all the information to even consider to make a big change like that.
With the information we have now, with the information that we have, our, our, your different statisticians, we're making the decision based upon the information we have now. It's not an arbitrarily saying, okay, we'll try this, we'll try it. It's not that at all. There's been a considerable amount of work put in to take what exists now and make this decision. We can't predict the future.
But I understand.
What we're reviewing here only applies to this property. He's only asking to change the zoning on this one piece of property. We've already gone through the text amendment hearings and that's where we were discussing how it could affect the entire town. What we're, what's before us now has, does not affect anything else other than this one piece of property. It does not apply to anywhere else because all he's asking for is a zoning change to this one piece of property. We're not, we're not admitting the text anymore to the zoning laws.
But, but doesn't it, does it make a difference knowing how many homes you're going to put on there or the potential of amount of homes that you're going to put on there? Doesn't that play a factor in?
We know the maximum.
We know what the maximum is based on the Benson. What if this, if the zoning change gets approved, then they have to propose to us what they plan to do with the property. That's the next step. But at this point, the zoning would just give you a maximum where you could go.
So it could go up to a hundred and whatever.
One and a half per acre.
Okay, so sixty six then, what you're saying is the maximum.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, is there anybody else who hasn't had a chance to state? Elena and George, one more comment?
Yeah, Seventy Eastwood Drive, Broadbrook. I just want to say that it really felt like the town of Ellington took more time and effort to consider this situation and warn you as the town where this is going to happen about the consequences of it for this rural area. I also have to agree with Michael Costa, who said that you cannot go in the process without knowing all the information. And to me, it feels like this whole project has been handled with kid's gloves because you wanted to give it a preferential treatment. You didn't think of what's best for the town. You accepted the proposed text change only because you couldn't get it any other way. So he decided to go from a different direction. He proposed the text change for the amendment. Now, under this text amendment change, you cannot refuse him the zone change to MFDD, which means that he is going to get it today. And then any other property that you have that may want to do the same thing based on this precedent will be able to do the same. And every time at every meeting I've been to through Zoom, this is the same approach. Oh, it doesn't cover this issue today. We're only here to discuss this very little thing. We'll think about everything else later. Well, you got to the point where you have already laid the ground for all these changes that are going to happen in the town with this approach.
There is a.
Right, this is not right. And you should take an example of Ellington's approach in your work. I really am grateful to you guys for doing your jobs, but you should be thinking about the town in general, not just one person and his family. And God knows, he's trying to appear so magnanimous. This land is going to have a lot of open space. Well, let me tell you, as a person who walked that land for many years, I know that the land that's going to be used as an open space cannot be used for building anything on it because it's being flooded every freaking year. Every rain, every snow melt, anything that falls off the sky in the form of water covers that area completely. That's the answer to you.
I have a question. Do you, I'm Frank Gowdy. I'm eighty two years old. Do you think that I have a reason to do a favor to the Chemets?
I don't.
Wait, don't punish, please. Do you think, you, you, you really questioned my integrity? You're thinking that I'm not committed to the town? I've been on the board for thirty years? I think that is an insult.
Well, I take it as an insult, Mr. Kimmon's words in the beginning when he treated us as hysterical people. We are not.
Alls I can say is we're looking for alternatives.
With regards to your question, Mr. Gowdy, I don't know. I don't know what to think because this process has not been transparent enough. Several meetings, when it would start with you opposing it and by the next meeting, you would be agreeable with it. This happened.
We are going through a analysis.
It is.
Put a process in accordance with the regulations, in accordance with the legal notice. And we are bound to follow the rules. What comment from everybody? That's what we are doing and then we will consider what to do. This part of the process is taking comments and we are doing that right. And we appreciate everybody taking their time to share their thoughts and concerns. But in the end, we have to make a decision based on the evidence before us and the regulations and the statutes and that's what we'll do. We have not predisposed any answer. We all have no idea how people feel. The commission will talk about it after the hearing concludes. So thank you for your comments and I think we covered the comments from the Zoom. We have one more from your.
I understand that you, when you put housing in, they count the number of bedrooms to see how many students are going to be coming into the school system. What is the difference between the forty eight units and the sixty six units to determine how many children will be, how many additional children could possibly be put into the school system?
That's not something we would analyze at this point in time.
Could you tell me how that's figured out?
I wouldn't be able to tell you how you figure out how many kids go into a school system.
Well, in other towns, it's by how many bedrooms are going to be in a development.
I don't know how many bedrooms will be in this development. We have no site plan. We have nothing, but should this be zoned R three? Or should it be zoned multifamily development and allow for shared land under units?
But there's no formula in town to figure out. I don't know how the school does that. Okay. All right. Thank you. Not in my level of expertise. I apologize. I forgot.
I have, I have one question for staff. Okay, so the purpose of the, the MFDD is to allow for communal shared property. If this property were to be sold and the next developer says, no, I just want to do a regular subdivision, do they keep the higher density or does it revert back to the R three density? do they keep the higher density or does it revert back to the R three density?
If it was resowned, right?
No, no, no. Say if if this now becomes an MFDD.
Yeah.
The property changes hands and the developer says, I don't wanna do a shared community. I wanna do a straight you know, subdivision. What density do they get to use?
He he would have to go through some process.
When you go back to the R three, it would stay MFDD?
Well, the MFDD is gonna give them the max, is gonna get a max of sixty-six units. So if you wanted to do a traditional subdivision, you'd have to go back to. Per lot. So you would have to show frontage and row and he'd have to go back to basically the layout that they were looking for.
Okay.
Just he can't, he can't um create a different configuration or form of ownership that's gonna increase the yield.
Okay, so let's clear that up. So there can't be somehow converted into higher density at some point. I just have one quick question. How is this development any different than like um Coleman Farms Meadow Farms? How is it any really any different? Don't they own their houses? They're not? It it's not a town road. It's not, it's it's a city sewer where so how is it different?
And Coleman Farms.
Coleman Farms on Tronley Road.
Yeah, but don't aren't some of them duplexes where they share a wall?
I don't.
I think when you drive in there, there's a couple that are.
Meadow Farms, we're all Meadow Farms and 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 what's the other one that's right there? Hillside, hill hillside that on Depot Street, right down the street.
Oh.
They're all single family. How are they?
This is no different. This was what I'm doing the text amendment though, trying to give examples of the whole town.
So it's not really any different. They have association, keeps the groomed, it keeps it, they pay to keep it all nice and and whatever. So it basically. And I apologize. I mean, y'all know what I'm doing. I don't know how much longer. Frank, I've been here thirty years. I may just be three meetings.
Um, did you wanna comment?
I, no, I did. I I know people are saying they're.
Sorry, I'm just, can you identify?
Yes, yeah, I mean, if you go thirty-five South Park Road. You know, I just, I know people are saying that they are offended by the use of mass hysteria, but it truly was mass hysteria. Um, one of my neighbors went door to door, got hundred and fifty um signatures on a petition and got everyone all wound up over a zone change. And so this caused a neighborhood lynch mob against my family, literally. Um, my family has received nasty phone calls and letters and one mess and even as far as taking pictures of my family's property and sending them to local and state agencies claiming that my family is committing various offenses that were found that were unfounded. Consequently, due to these acts, the shame of my family can no longer allow anyone else to access their property like they always have. And I just wanna add that my family was more than transparent through this whole process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I think we're commenting now. Um. Do we need to hold open for more comments and conversations with the applicant or are we ready to close the public here?
I'll go very.
To just be a matter of if you felt that there were any questions that you would want us to provide answers to or or.
Guess my question for you, and I don't expect an answer tonight because I think you would need to draft motions for us to consider both ways. But what are the factors we by law are required to consider in a zone change? In the middle. That's what I would ask. So it's not that we need conversation on it, but I wanna make sure we do it by the book because everybody is concerned that we are doing this right. I wanna make sure we are doing it right and I know you'll be very careful and make sure.
One last comment. I I'm very impressed with all you residents of East Windsor and your concern for the town and concern for this particular project. And my plea is we have three openings for alternates and some of you people, most of you people, all you people seem very qualified to come on up and help us out. So maybe you should consider that.
Okay, sorry.
I just wanna ask one question to Mary. Um, none of the infrastructures in the grounds is energized, right? Or is it? We've talked about the water line going to the next property and I just wanna clarify whether it is a potential future connection related to water or if there's already water source being provided.
The only the only energized system is the water line. The water line is active. It supplies water to Hemlock Court and the subdivision. I can't think of the name cross from across three M East Road.
And that was put in what? Brooklyn?
Yes. Uh, what was that put in? What year? Yeah, uh, probably two thousand and two thousand.
Two thousand, yeah, two thousand and one.
Yeah, somewhere in that area.
Which is the purpose of the utility easement shown at the at the note that that uh upper all the side, correct? So that utility easement is to serve the existing water line, which is energized and providing water to the subdivisions to the right of the map.
Correct. So the existing water line follows the main road right through the property to go to Hemlock Court, and that's why we have this this way. All the other infrastructure that is in place is a gravity sewer, uh, storm drainage is in place, um, but those are not.
Is Aspen Porter the next street up on the water main too?
I believe it's Hemlock, Aspen. Yeah, then there's one in.
Yeah, Brookwood.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, people feel you wanna keep this open and take more comments or?
Can I just say one last thing?
Yeah.
So I I did present this this rendering. I forgot I did have me announced it as one of the chief staff to the record. That's why I think the board don't have that. Um, and other than the other comments, I don't have anything, but I would entertain at this point, uh, we're open to closing the public hearing.
I'm ready.
Someone wanna make a motion either to continue or to close the public here?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for application P Z twenty twenty-one dash twenty for a zone change application. Approximately forty-eight lots, Nova's Corey Meadows on an R three to an MFDD, the applicant being S J K Properties.
Is there a second to that? All those in favor? I think that unanimous. Okay, so. Old business. The discussion on temporary cannabis moratorium. There was a meeting held with the selection on September second. And um it Ruth knows more about this topic than I will ever know and um the gist of it that I got through a very bad internet connection at my sister's house was um there are many more constraints on where you could locate a cannabis retail operation than I had ever envisioned. So potentially the need to do a moratorium appears to not exist in my mind, but I'm open to input from all of you if you still feel the need for us to.
Well, don't we have to amend our our regulations to show it as where it's allowable for use, which we currently don't have it anymore? So the moratorium is need to give us time to amend our regulations to either make things special use permit through by right or however we wanna apply to what in what zones, what areas this will be acceptable to use.
I guess what I thought I understood and maybe I misunderstood was Mike indicated an application could come in today and we wouldn't be able to review it. Um, but there seems to be maybe statutory locations where cannabis can and can't happen, but I may misunderstand. So Ruth, Mike can help me.
There are some site controls in the act and the first one would be a cap, right, to lose all based on population. So there's one retail establishment and one micro cultivator establishment allowed per twenty-five thousand. So East Windsor is allowed one. The piece that touches zoning is in order for someone to apply for a license to operate with this, you know, with the state to be either a retailer or a cultivator, they have to include in their application an affirmative decision from the town that they're allowed to have this use in the town. And the town is obligated by law to only give what they're the cap. Unless you can't.
Is there a cap on all of it? Because it seems to me there's a growing manufacturing and there is the retail and they could be two different animals or one mind.
So yeah, there's one and of course, the folks that came to speak with us asked that question too because they aspire to have. If you're a micro cultivator, you can sell what you grow. Um, if you wanna be a larger cultivator, which the act is very silent on whether uh the cap would apply to that, they specifically cap the shoes and it may be something that they just have. It's from my read is they envision a micro cultivator expanding, they're allowing expansions. Every year you get five thousand square feet more in gross space until you hit twenty-five thousand square feet. And then you would have to apply to be a larger cultivator. So they're they're kind of built in this, let's take steps. That's what that's what I took away from. We will have to amend the zone regulations. The the way I interpret, if you don't, if you haven't made your changes to your regulations and someone comes in and says this, I won't be a retail cannabis establishment. As looking from the town, I have to treat that like a similar use. I'm gonna go to.
A liquor store.
A liquor store and I and I'm gonna say you need a special permit that to be reviewed and approved by our plan of the commission in order to be an establishment. That's how.
Oh, that works for the retail. What about so?
Cultivators.
Then it would be, where would we want to cite that use? In town.
It's not considered agriculture.
It is not. The state statutes say it is not. It's manufactured.
Right.
And um so manufacturing zone makes sense for a location of town. I sent you like three pictures of where we want. Oh, your can.
So do you feel that we need a moratorium or we need to quickly adopt changes to the zoning rights?
My thought on it are to do a quick change in zone rules only because we're capped. And we're capped until at least twenty twenty-four, when the state will reassess and look at the market and decide whether or not to lower, you know, raise raise the cap so that.
Or we feel that. Seven percent?
Excuse me?
Is it seven percent?
Seven percent what?
Of of the, you get this this tax, it's back.
Oh, the municipality gets a three percent.
Three percent.
On retail.
So we we don't get really a lot of money.
Well, it's a really expensive.
Well, especially I understand.
Um, as far as I know. Enfield prohibited and town council.
Yeah.
Prohibited.
Prohibited and self-lancer?
No, Enfield.
No.
Enfield, I don't know about self-lancer.
All right.
But Enfield said they had a a town council voted to prohibit, but there's a petition uh brewing with the citizens who disagree.
The reason it just will have a lot of buyers or clients, whatever you call them.
There's um.
People who wanna do it and do it.
So we've been out um learning on learning tours. We went up to Worcester to retail establishment to see what it was about. The security is
Yeah.
like triple triple layers and they're really quite um savvy business people.
Yeah.
And this just everything is tracked. It's highly, highly regulated. And we've been to a couple places learning, went to a cultivation facility to see that. You can't make a move. You are on film all the time. Every plant is far cooked. It's and so I just, there was comfort in being able to see um because we really needed to put into context for ourselves what to expect because you can draw absence of that, you're gonna fill in the gaps with your experience in some life.
My experience on the visit, Frank, was it it's a it's a highly organized, high secure operation in the grow facility. I mean, this young man who was their cultivator or their, I mean, this kid had, I think he had a PhD the way he talked. Those plants were, I mean, I I envisioned going in there and seeing just tie-dyed shirts and everybody just this was a tight ship. But I mean, and they had cameras on everybody. These people couldn't make a move. It was like being in a being in a casino wall. I mean, nobody, I mean, and then when we went to the retail operation, you think from the outside, it looked like a
Oh, no.
No, Dunkin' Donuts. Like, uh, I mean, it's beautiful inside and there's no product. You have to stand at the counter. The people know that, I mean, they know the product. They're they're very passionate about what they're selling. And they put your order together, they give it to you in a bag. You have to go through security, give your driver's license and get a badge to get in. And then they give you your, well, they didn't keep our license, but we had to give the badges back. I mean.
Well, we had badges because we were on a tour.
Oh, oh, I thought the, I thought everybody got that.
The customers get um.
But they.
When you're on my person mine. Oh, they do. That's the thing, you know, limited. Yeah, and it goes in a computer base. Your license goes through the scanner and they're tracking.
Yeah, Ruth got rejected.
I I think you, I think you'd be surprised about people using these products. You think they're a bunch of kids hanging out on the floor smoking pot, but there's a lot. Frank, there's a lot of people out there that you would highly suspect she went on gummies. That you would not even see. They were selling a chocolate bar. That was like that. It was thirty dollars. Do you taste it? I don't know. No, they weren't giving out samples, well, draft.
But that's the we were on the moratorium, but if we were on a.
Moratorium has already been referred.
Yeah.
They both tracked exactly the same from a regular perspective at first time, referred to cry thirty-five days, public hearing, two weeks before notice, we have to open hearing. Once the record is dropped.
So is your recommendation to go with a moratorium or bow with a red change that gives us regulatory control? I can go right away. What zone?
Where a lot of other towns do it, we start that field, any idea?
Um, I listened in on Weathersfield, T C theater, thanks. And um that commission voted to do a temporary moratorium while they kind of studied the issue and.
I feel like the town's done a lot of studying of the issue um as a whole, to view with Joe and Jason have been doing the research.
How long does it take to impose the moratorium?
The same amount of time it would take to tend the right, right? Well, other than.
Well, yeah, to 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 make it, you know, valid or.
Well, it's already been referred because we met however long ago. Okay, so that.
This is already been submitted.
That's already been submitted to crop. So you if you would have to go and schedule a hearing for the next meeting. If you draft regulations, we would have to draft, refer, hear.
So draft the regulations, are we gonna copy and paste from another town that's already done? This is anybody who worked and know we got Massachusetts? Or is anybody taking the lead? Has anybody spent the money first before we draft the regulations?
Towns. Newington and Middletown, I think. I could pull there, but Newington had a dispensary and probably Middletown to to as well, but I don't I don't know that for sure. Uh, so they may have been ahead in the game, you know, as far as. When they had the regulations.
But it seems.
Can we lift the moratorium anytime we want?
So, I mean, to me, it seems a prudent thing is to impose the moratorium, draft our regs, get our ducks in a row, and then when we feel we're ready. We can lift the moratorium, doesn't have to wait. However.
My only concern is. The town has been meeting with a developer who seems to want to build a production site.
Based on that meeting, he can't grow the size because we're only allowed for a micro.
Oh, okay.
Which he understands, I did do that, because he questioned that.
Because I would hate to lose a business.
So, and I will say, he knows that the discussion of the time. And, you know.
It's but it's not intended to stop him.
It's not, it's not that way, but he's not only looking at.
Oh, he isn't.
Yeah, he finds a place that.
It sounded like he bought a land.
He does.
He's Michael Boy.
But, you know. He don't understand, it's not like it would shock that we just need time. You know, so that. That's where that is.
That's quite the safer way.
You know, I know as drafted, we say, sorry, Joe, go ahead. I was gonna say as drafted in that might put together six months, maybe consider for period.
We can lift it anytime we're ready.
Do we have to do a process to lift?
You would do that. So we are.
So the regulations would include a sunset.
So we're including this as chapter whatever of section eight thirteen, so so section eight thirteen will become temporary cannabis moratorium or whatever you decide. And then we would just replace that tax with whatever you adopt, so the idea would be you would lift and replace. So that section gets established for.
Do you think that would deter anybody from being?
I just don't want it to turn somebody from pursuing a business interest, they could be good for the tax base of these ones.
You can tell the vote, hey, we're definitely interested, but we want to get everything lined up.
We have to fix our.
We don't change the rest.
Things through.
And so.
It seems like.
We moved the drafting of regulations for priority, you know, status as far as. We're moving that along.
Now, how different is it, how different would would this alcohol?
It's much more regulated on the state level.
Well, on state level, but on our level, in in our level, I mean, we regulate. Just correct me if I'm, but we regulate where alcohol could be sold.
Right. And have the restrictions on the location.
Right.
You know, restricted from being tied in their schools, hospitals, veterans homes, camps, barracks, the armed forces, churches and the like. Very similar.
So, right, I mean, I just think that if we do a moratorium. We're gonna scare people away, I mean.
I don't wanna send a message to the selectmen that seem to be recruiting business to East Windsor that we're an obstacle.
I don't think you're scaring them away. They've already set this up. They've already had people interested.
My sense, they've already set up the moratorium to crop. Well, we did.
That was our selection. On the board of selectmen.
Yep.
That was a not, that was not sanctioned by the board of selectmen. And it's really not the message we want to send everyone. Like I, my concern is that we spend a lot of time doing the moratorium when we just spend time doing, you know, just.
Do the regular.
Doing regulations, you're not setting a policy and you can't, right, just like with alcohol. You can set the place, but the state tells you what you can do, what what the people can do, what the establishment can do, not us, we don't get involved in that. This is the same way, we set the place, we're not involved in the rest of it, the host agreement and all that stuff, that's policy, that's that's for selectmen.
But I guess the question I'm asking is if we. Move forward and put a temporary moratorium on just to give us a couple of months to draft. Uh, regulations that allow this.
So. My concern is you're gonna spend a couple of months setting a moratorium, right, and then we're gonna. Then then get to drafting of the regulations.
I guess it's already written, so there's no time and.
Well, we would, we do need to do some drafting, but we can start that anytime.
Well, we could write them quicker and just with the moratorium, I mean, it seems to me. Seems to me that we can do it rather quickly. And with the moratorium and we're we're in business, so to speak.
Yeah, so I'm just saying those are, but I think the board, the board of selectmen generally. We don't wanna lose our way, you know, blocking it and then spend a lot of time, you know. We don't want to send a wrong message, so if we're gonna do this, you know, whatever you're gonna do, you just have to make sure we stick to it.
Yeah, I I think that could be done, how do you feel, but.
I think there's a two sides, you have two options, you go with a moratorium and you have people that are concerned about the optics. And there's the the way that you deal with that is you you talk to the folks that have expressed interest and you ask them to be a participant in developing regulations during the moratorium. And you go with the regulations and the the pro there is you don't deal with the optics of the town establishing a moratorium. And someone saying, well, gee, that means they don't want it and but the the potential there is that. If someone comes in with an application before you adopt regulations, you have to treat it like whatever the reg said. So.
What would we do if they came in tomorrow?
You'd have to look at the regs and you'd have to say.
Boy, that's. It's on alcohol. And you treat it like alcohol.
You treat it like.
Under the regs.
But it could.
Would you be limited to five standards under alcohol unless it came under the H C C, that's a different reg.
But the other, what are the standards, I'll say, of? The state if.
And the state doesn't have the regs yet.
Okay.
That's the, that's the, that's.
Not for a long time.
Right.
But it isn't that bad if we regulated it like alcohol. That's probably not a bad thing, because they don't allow it in your schools.
I can read you the criteria that's on the books now, if you're interested in hearing it. Um, there are some of the things we've already talked about, it's already there. So it says that no, no, related sales shall be created within five hundred feet of any school. And that gives the definition. It says that daycare centers are exempt from the above requirement in relation to full service restaurants. The minimum distance shall be determined by the main entrance point, so when we're determining what five hundred feet is.
The drive.
Yeah, talks about live entertainment or M five music. Must be approved for the site, special use permit, all sales or serving of alcohol that is required with the control act. Temporary liquor permits for nonprofit or non commercial organizations, maybe granted by the P C C's. So those are the, that's section eight oh five, which is up. So, yeah, I a hundred percent, I am on board with the fact that I think we could make the case, though. Uh, other people have said we have to treat a retail and retail alcohol, but I think we can make a case that it needs a special permit. The criteria by which you as the commission become comfortable with that special permit is a little more correct. I think we we could safely say that they at least need a special permit.
Yeah.
But the criteria.
I mean, there are details you have to work out, I mean, you know, now they have the no smoking in public areas, you're gonna have a. A one on our regulation, you can't smoke it, you can only smoke it in your home where.
That would really be a zoning thing.
That would have to go into by ordinance.
Yeah, so we have to go through all that and I would just, you know, I must make sure we take the time to find those those points out.
But those are.
That's not us.
That's not us, and my fear is if we. Send the signal of a moratorium. We need to be very careful, we don't.
We're saying we don't want to play ball.
And we don't want to lose our manufacturing facility that goes to making building in our industrial part.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, manufacturing has to go in manufacturing, no matter what, unless there's a zone change. So someone wants to come here for manufacturing, they have to be an M one.
Okay, so we have, well, we have light and heavy and they're allowed in different zones accordingly, so we'd have to figure out if this would be considered lighter heavy.
So we have to decide where they can be, that's our decision, is where they can be, where they can grow and where they can retail. That's that's. Simplifying and I'm not trying to.
Right, but I would want the growing to be indoors so that we don't have odor complaints of neighbors.
Well, then that's a rule we would enforce. Or a rule we would.
You write a section kind of like.
Cause it'll start doing it up against residential, you know.
So let's just say hypothetically. I want to grow in an M one zone where there's nothing around me. Would you consider letting me grow outside also?
Yes, if there was nothing around you.
Right, so.
There's no regulation right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so we decide on where it can be. And that's it. No.
No, we have to get into cycle.
Then well, once we got a plan, then we would decide all that, I get it, but we we need to establish the ground, basically the ground rules of. M one for manufacturing.
Retail for retail.
We need to establish the where and the how, so we can talk, because the the law also gives you the ability to to regulate signage and some of these.
Exactly.
But, you know, we already know we have to make a tweet because we don't know, according to the bulk table, we don't allow alcohol sales in T C five. Which you might very well want to consider retail for, for retail cannabis, right, so we know we're at the very least, we're gonna have to tweak. That, because I would imagine, that sounds like what you guys.
Light, light manufacturing is allowed by right in the M one.
By right.
By right.
So we'll have to tweak that, I would imagine you'll worry about.
It's light manufacturing and it's indoors and it's.
Well, so that's, we'd have to create a distinction between exterior and interior.
And so how, until until we have it, does it fall under light manufacturing, does it fall under heavy manufacturing?
So it might start off in light manufacturing, but as you said, it might start growing in five years and it now becomes heavy manufacturing.
Right, it's long term, they keep. Right, but once it's already been established by right, then you have no control.
One of the things, just to color in, you know, the number of licenses, there's nine separate types of licenses, all the way from transporting. You know, growing it to transporting it to a to a location to find a consumer. So you could envision you're growing it and then you have another license to extract THC, right? And another license, and it's all happening under one roof, to make chocolate bars and another like, you know. So labeling.
You wouldn't get that.
Yeah, and maybe that's why they've done this. The cap on the things that.
Does the state allow individuals to have, like, I don't know, the state of Maine, you can have six plants per adult.
That's in there, it's a couple of years out, right now.
At your house, we would regulate that.
Right.
No, but I mean, is that, is that, I don't, I don't know the law, is that now presently?
Um, I think within a couple of years it will be.
So it's not.
It's not right now, but yeah, it's like a max of twelve plants or something.
So.
Jason is on, do we want to let him weigh in on this?
Yeah, and he has access to his email to share some photos.
Well, it's more a.
So.
What's his thought on what message it would send if we went with a temporary moratorium while we were drafting?
Never mind, there's Jason, I'll just keep.
Hey, everybody. So, uh, be- before I, before I address the the direct question that I was asked, I think Commissioner Sarra offered a comment, he was, he was trying to finish, so Joe, do you want to go ahead?
Oh, no, please, um. It's, I'm just trying to get my bearings here, so if 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 I wanted. If I want to set up a facility here, I have to get your permission, our permission, the town, before I can apply for the license and everything for the state. Correct?
Correct.
So if we push the can down the road with the moratorium. That pushes anybody off or coming to us and then getting this ball rolling with the state so they can start retailing in Maine or growing or.
Whatever.
Right?
Right, the state doesn't have the application process started yet, so they can't even apply to the state. State doesn't have that entire license and G J R, it's, there's zero on that yet, because they figured they'd kick the ball to us and. I don't know, I guess they're waiting to see.
But the the first step in the state application process will be to demonstrate that you have local approval already. So if we put, to your point, Commissioner, if we were to put a moratorium in place on applicants. That means that 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 state process, when it's ready, couldn't start until our process has been completed. So, so we would be slowing ourselves down. You know, Commissioner Gowdy at one point made a comment about it's not that much money as a, as an aside with one of the companies that we've visited and and. Ruth and I have been to two so far with at least one more coming plus conversations with a fourth. Um, and in conversations with one of them, the cultivation under twenty thousand square feet. Uh, generated somewhere between thirty and forty million dollars last year. So, so Frank, I know you were a former math teacher, three percent of thirty million dollars is a million bucks for ourselves. That's before you consider the retail component of it, which was another eight million in retail sales last year through that same company. Um, so you're talking new revenue to the town somewhere in the seven figure range.
Wow.
Amazing.
Only three percent. You know, it doesn't sound like it would be that much, but when you add what their balance sheet was.
Chocolate bar is thirty dollars, two gummies is thirty dollars, you know, it's.
So that's, that's kind of why I don't want to do a moratorium, I just want to get rolling here.
Well, I can see, you know, but I I don't want to get caught with problems down the road.
Well, I think if we say the stat expedite the drafting.
If we carry up on a reg, still have the moratorium, we can lift the moratorium at any point. Because there are, there are some questions I think we have, you know, we have to consider.
I guess the partner, we gotta be clear on it, so in order to put in a moratorium, we still have to do a public hearing, correct? So just to do the moratorium is gonna take about as much time as to do the regs.
And we're.
Because we have to do a public hearing, we're gonna ask if the public wants the the moratorium, it's not, we can't just tonight say, yes, there's a moratorium. We gotta post it, we gotta.
And do we want to have that discussion two times?
Yeah. Well, they're tracking differently, yeah, I mean, we certainly can fire a real reg. We we could, we could try to draft something. The fastest, even, I I just, looking at the fastest timeline, we could, we could pull together. A draft regulation that mirrored the alcohol and we would get it to you for review as if we could write it in two weeks and.
No, so even a month.
Right. So if we got you in a month and you, once you were happy with the language, we refer it to crop, thirty five days.
So it's two months.
You know, there's thirty five days from that, you then receive it, then we hold a public hearing.
So it's probably another two weeks, there's like, we're looking at two and a half months is the quickest we can do this.
For regulations.
And to do a moratorium, it'll take.
Moratorium has only already gone to crop. We can schedule.
Thirty days, thirty five days.
So then you vote yes or no, you, there's no, we don't workshop the language of the moratorium, we just.
But once it comes back from crop, then we still have to do a public hearing, correct?
Right, so this is where we are now.
So that we've got it back now or not?
That has come back from crop as a, whenever, because we had that meeting a couple of meetings ago where we talked about it.
So we could either do a moratorium within, say. Three meetings from now, so it's six weeks.
Or, no, we, I mean, in theory, we could schedule a public hearing for the next meeting, because I only need to put it in paper, so that would be two weeks. But like, if anything gets changed or we've enacted regs, it's gotta go to crop. So that is what's taxed on the three meetings.
It's either moratorium in two weeks or regulations in two and a half months. Yeah, but look at it this way too, if the state's not ready, what's our rush?
Right.
So why can't we just work on the regs? If the, I mean, if the state's not ready, at least it 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 gives us the appearances in town that we're we're interested, we're not. We didn't just have a council meeting and say, no, not in our town and now our our, the public's upset about it.
And it seems to me between Ruth and Jason, they, any potential applicant is gonna come talk to them and they can say, can you hold up on applying to us for. Three months till we get growing in place as opposed to. And we put in a moratorium temporarily, you know.
And Commissioner Gold, and that's exactly what I have been saying to them is that, you know, we're still trying to figure out what the new law says, it's just like every other town in Connecticut. So, you know, work with us for a little bit of time and they have so far, you know, i- if you're dealing with a company like particularly the the one that spoke with us jointly a couple of weeks ago. Um, I have been impressed with how serious these business people are. They're not looking to make it to rush into something that's that's gonna be a rash decision for them either. Um, so I think, uh, we have the opportunity of saying to them, let us figure out what we need to do in-house.
Guess I would like just to see us get something for change in that South Windsor and not, you know, Enfield. Well, they're not getting it right now, but the public is in an uproar about that yet.
So I tell you, roll it on the moratorium.
Nice pun, Jim.
Yep.
You said, want to roll without the bar, sorry?
That's kind of my feeling is. That's kind of my feeling is.
All right, I'll roll on that. I'm the old man, I don't know too much about that, but I've learned it.
That's like, by then, oh, it's not over.
We need to make a motion?
Well.
What do you need?
It's a proposal, um.
Or suggestions?
Suggestions from my.
Would suggest the most.
Okay.
Only because I have already. Three meetings ago, we voted to send this to crime, and so I just think for the first.
Okay. I guess we need a motion to. Well, we didn't adopt it, uh, put it on hold and instead focus on.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we do not proceed with the moratorium. And that we proceed with drafting regulations for the control of cannabis.
You, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, that's unanimous.
So I have a question, now do we bring the public in or we do this on our. We bring the reg, we do the regs and then bring out.
Yeah, then he'll be a public here again.
I'm sorry for all the questions.
No problem. We appreciate them.
Okay.
As we have. New business. Uh, staff proposed text amendment to outdoor dining. And for me, if I'm on my, this is, the statute was revised and makes outdoor dining a right. And so we are just correcting our regs to be consistent with the change to the statute.
Perfect. I didn't feel it made sense to send this, send the last two sections to crime, send this to crimes and that to crime, so I, I held off. But yes, the, there were temporary outdoor dining approvals that the executive order said this town did not approve in ten days. They were automatically approved, so the purpose of this is to allow anybody that's established an outdoor dining. Portion of their building or property or whatever to, to continue it. So.
And an accessory use.
So that, my, my, it just says a bright, which means I can't hold this here. You can do it by site planner, by, by someone in person. My suggestion is we do it this way. As an accessory use, because I think that gives a little bit more control in how we regulate the restaurants overall, so. We're, I mean, the commission can do whatever feels most appropriate, and then the second, the red line doesn't look correct, but five oh three point three outdoor dining is on, on. So that's a proposed new section, which is the criteria by which we will use to evaluate approval. Because on their site plan, you can. You can include criteria, you just have to be able to say yes or no, it can't be subjective, so this is what I'm suggesting you can start. Anything to do to keep them in business.
Yeah, and I like the outdoor dining, I think it's a nice addition to restaurants.
Do we need to make any, have a, you need anything from us on this?
If you like it as is, uh, a motion to send to crime would be great, if you wanna workshop it some more, then we can just hold.
We want to. Oh, there's one word that doesn't, will work for me in the last sentence underneath of the one, two, and three.
Yeah, so my. We can work on the language, so my goal is to basically say, if you're a bar and you serve alcohol, you don't get to make this and as a bright extension of your operation. Because the point is it's gotta be related to food service, so.
That's how the state was, right?
So I. There may be a better way to say that, but. It's just, we can, if the commission's comfortable with us.
Concept.
Yeah, then we'll tweak it and send it.
So, yes, a motion to tweak and send it to crime.
All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, allow staff to amend the proposed text amendment for outdoor dining six five oh three and forward it onto crime.
Is there a second? Seconded by Frank, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
That's unanimous. Um, under other business, we don't have any.
Uh, the.
Chase's letter.
Oh, that's correct.
That's where I put it, mind me. So then we'll move on to correspondence and, um, you have in front of you something that Jason drafted today. Um, at the joint meeting between. At the selectmen's meeting where they invited us to attend, one of the topics. Was. Ongoing number of solar projects being proposed. And. The feeling. That it conflicts with our. Desire to maintain open space and agriculture in the town and, and how much is enough? I think Jason did a really good job. Supporting renewables, supporting solar, but saying, um, we've done more than our fair share and. Would like to see solar in appropriate places, like on buildings, on parking lots. But we didn't wanna lose our farm land soul. And he's asking if we would be comfortable co-signing this with the selectmen, if people want edits or it's a. Real problem to the commission, I, I think it's a good policy statement, but that's me and it's not a decision, it's the commission's decision.
I, I agree, Jason, we already have four big major developments coming in the last year.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm in favor.
Yeah.
But I have a question on the procedure. We're responsible for writing a P O C D.
Yeah.
Obviously, Jason's trying to protect that, but we didn't have much input into this as a commission.
We, we don't get it.
We know.
We have not, the citing council gets it. And so, Jason has drafted this letter to the citing council. That's their, the decision-making body, not us.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to make, make a motion then that we.
Oh, sure.
That we endorse.
Agreed, yeah.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we endorse the selectman's letter to the citing council, uh, as, as the planning is of the commission.
And would you be okay if I signed it on our behalf?
Absolutely.
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
That's unanimous, so now it's, the selectmen need to agree in this.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chairman, for, uh, putting that on the agenda tonight, just because of the way our meeting's spelled. With yours being two days ahead of, uh, the selectmen's, if we didn't do it tonight, it would have been more than a month from the first conversation. Uh, from when we would actually have been able to get that transmitted, so you guys taking that, uh, up this evening, uh, will allow the selectmen to do the same on Thursday so that. We can kind of lay our marker down a bit more quickly, so I, I appreciate the, the indulgence.
I appreciate you writing it and I'm glad that it gets on the record with the citing council before they make more decisions. After, have more applicants telling us what they are willing to do without our input. Thank you, for executive session, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Excuse me. Um, your agenda was a bit unclear, um, I'd like an opportunity to speak to the committee, um, if I may.
Um.
Um, I'm from Blue Rhino Propane, we have an interest in thirty-three Apothecary Small Road.
Yeah, well, who's that hearing?
That hearing was about the owner's permit renewal.
Yes.
This is.
It's on the same property?
It's on the same property. Um, I just wanted to bring it to the committee's attention that we are interested in that property, Blue Rhino Propane. And we are looking to possibly build a barbecue tank refill facility on that property. And what I was looking from this committee was your opinion on whether or not a business of that nature would fit within your community.
Well, that's something you should be talking to the town staff about.
Okay. Okay, I apologize, it seems to me there's some miscommunication, someone from our proper, uh, someone from our property department had contacted somebody from your town today. And I was told to come down here and bring this up and talk to the committee about it, so apparently there's been, you know, just a breakdown of communication.
I apologize.
No, no, there's no apology necessary, I just wanted a, an opportunity just to bring it before the committee and, and let you know, we don't, we don't have any preliminary plans. Drawn or drafted for that site, uh, we are using C D M Smith, I'm sure you're familiar with that organization out of Hartford.
What was, before us, it was. An application and it was for a specific use that wasn't a specific use. If they wanna amend their application.
Because would this be considered an accessory use or would this be considered as a standard? Well, we will be purchasing this property from Mr. Holden.
So this whole, the whole processing would, would go away?
Wow. Yeah, so I wouldn't be bothered to come. Yeah, and, and, and again, I don't, I didn't know he was going to be here, um, he wasn't surprised that I was here because we've already signed a letter of intent with him. Um, so would that be considered a permitted use in that area? Oh. And what, what does that fall on?
So. What, what, why didn't you come here? Me, I guess, let you.
Well, you see, you have to, you have to spell it.
See, that would be a permitted use of that.
It's A, N, D, D, N, J, A, N, last name is A, N, D.
But I'm just saying.
Or E.
He's asking for, like we've done before, is like.
J, I, Z.
He's not gonna be surprised, let's go.
Blue Rhino.
Thank you so much. Talking with, um, one of the, of Jason.
Oh, you've been talking to Jason, okay, okay, so.
So he knew that this application was.
Case was there, I'll go through.
But he told me he wanted to do something on his own, right, like not, not both uses on the site.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Sorry, I told the duty. Okay, we could draw a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.